Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. My name is Rick Adams. I have the honor of being the Chair of the Board of the Institute of the Black World Twenty First Century. I do a background piece, mostly with the Black World Media Network, our Pan-African network for the world. Dr. Taiwon Lovelace, she is chair in waiting, and we have a task to do this morning, this evening.
Yes.
Let me say that some people been around acting like something happened real bad. So maybe I'm just strange, but I really don't care. I can remember time, 1972, four years after Dr. King was killed, we gathered in one of the greatest conventions ever held. And you know, we got a long convention movement history from the 19th and into the 20th century. And we went on after that, and McGovern ran, some may remember that, others may not, but he lost every state but Massachusetts and the District of Columbia. Hell, District of Columbia. My point is, I even before that remembered staying up all night listening when Ronnie Reagan, Reagan got in. And about six top senators went down, and me and my best friend worked at this organizing organization, and I went there and we had our heads down all, and they said, "What's wrong with you?" We said, "Oh, I ain't never pick cotton. I'm not picking no cotton." And sister, there was the director said, "You all, we've seen worse." So my message is, we've seen worse. And the good thing is, we have the Institute of the Black World Twenty First Century, and we have all of you all, this tremendous brain trust, this group of not just folks who be thinking, but making stuff happen. So we're here to come up with an analysis, but we're going to get to a strategy, and then we're going to get to some action. That's why we're here. I welcome you all, and after this, this stream will be recorded, or if you're listening and you want to tap your family, your friends, please do so, because you're going to hear something special this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Taiwon Lovelace, and again, welcome from the Institute of the Black World. Let's embrace the spirit of unity, collaboration, and progress as we engage in this discussion this evening. Let's make the most of this incredible gathering and the opportunity to shape a brighter future for Black America. Next, I would like to introduce this impressive sister, Dr. Denise Mitchum, also known as Queen of Consultants. It's recognized as one of the top consultants and influencers in the world. Her mission is driving change and impacting lives, which can be witnessed in the launch of her company, Social Currency. She is a Howard alum, H-U, I couldn't resist, and president of Harvard's Women's Alumni Association, among a list of other distinctions. She is also the mother of seven and the grandmother of six. Please welcome Dr. Denise Mitchum.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me, Dr. Daniels. I'm so happy to be here and share this platform with so many wonderful people here this evening. I'm here to introduce someone who I've come to know and love like my own daughter, Dr. Jitali Belatan, known as Dr. J to her students. And she's an angel investor and finance expert in the U.S., U.K., and Africa markets. After 22 and a half years of experience in the finance world at companies like CFFB, which is Credit Suisse Bank, where she managed a portfolio of $3.2 billion, Dr. Jitali successfully transitioned to becoming a neuropsychologist with her PhD from NYU to focus on mental and financial health. Her most recent accomplishments, she is co-host and finance expert on a show for Disney and Microsoft Philanthropy Department, Our America in the Black, co-owning a gold mine in Ghana where she and her team are working on minor rights, creation of an education-based crypto hedge fund, and a youth adult finance curriculum in 430 schools in the country. I'm so happy to know her, I'm so happy to work with her, I'm spoke to, I'm so happy to be her mama bear, as she calls me. And I'd like to introduce to everyone Dr. Jitali Belatan, who will be moderating the panel this evening. Dr. J?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone. As Dr. Denise Mitchum has mentioned, I'm Dr. Jitali Belatan, you can call me Dr. J. All my students call me this, and I'm the Dr. J, I'm the, of finance, right? And so, to be in this space as a former investment banker, to also be a woman who's used to being in a very Caucasian male-dominated world, to now be in a space as an entrepreneur, to have been a successful entrepreneur, and now have a finance curriculum as of this month that has now gone into 486 schools around the United States and world, U.K., African markets like Ghana, the list continues. It is such a beautiful experience to be a part of this. Many years ago, I actually, my first experience with this conference was the year I became an entrepreneur, the following year was a presidential election, and a friend of mine said, "Hey, you know, to vend," I just wrote a book, it was called Ones vs. Needs for Youth Financial Literacy, and I decided I was going to put this book into a curriculum and put it in the schools, and she said, "We should, we should vent at this event." And the event happened to be Dr. Ron Daniels' event. And that year, he had Farrakhan, and it was in New Jersey, and it was such this very big event, and I came from this very corporate structure, had never done anything so entrepreneurial, and it was just out of my character, and I was scared, and I had to travel from Long Island to New Jersey with a little one on my hip, and it was my first vending event, and my son at that time was three years old, and I did it with him on my hip. And so I built my brand with him on my hip. So I think, right now, when I think about fear and anxiety, I know that a lot of our people have fear and anxiety over what's happening with the economy. As a former investment banker, I'm here to tell you to stop worrying about and do something about it, right? And I'm hoping today, when we hear these conversations from this amazing panelists, this is what we walk away with, right? Before Trump became president, people kept telling me, "Dr. J, you're a Black Republican, are you voting for him?" And I said, "It doesn't really matter who I vote for in this particular situation, I'm going to be investing in companies on both sides to be careful, no matter who wins, to position myself to be financially well." And they're like, "What do you mean?" I'm like, "Let's be honest. If Kamala wins and the Democrats win this election, what companies are going to do well? Is it going to be all about the Go Green initiatives? What companies are we going to see who are supporting that campaign? Investing in those companies might be a good play. If Trump wins, you know, we hear companies like, I won't name any in particular in case the news are wrong, but we hear a lot of these major Fortune 500 companies that have sponsored and invested in his corporation. Let's say Walmart was one of them, right? A lot of people are still going to use that company, and guess what? Because they have this relationship with him, we know Elon Musk was one of them. Notice how Tesla's stock started going up because Trump won, and then he appointed him a position in the government. So these are companies, and these are things that we can do to position ourselves, to not only protect ourselves, but now we can also say, "You know what? These are the companies that voted for someone that some of us didn't want to be in office, potentially, right? Well, maybe this is a moment for us to put our money together, put our voices together and galvanize, to ensure that we now put the fire to these people and say, 'You don't have enough diversity on your board. You know, who's your CMO? Who's your CEO? Instead of us patronizing your companies, this is an opportunity for us to pool our resources together and make sure our voices are heard.'" We heard last night that there's a conversation about reparations because of the whole HBCU and DEI, and there's an attack where they're saying that instead of us as African-American or Afro-British or whatever, but if you're Black in America, instead of you getting reparations, that they feel like Caucasian people should be getting reparations, right? And so, guess what's going to happen? That will actually be accomplished, and they will get some kind of money from the government if we as people that are Black in America don't stand together and make sure our voices and our dollars are being felt and heard. So as we go into tonight's experience, I want us to think about that, and you'll hear more from me. I look forward to hearing what everybody has to say, and hopefully, this is a moment where we could start actually making change and not just talking about our concerns and making an actual move towards fixing our concerns. So on that note, I would love to invite Reverend Dr. Sarah Johnson.
Friends, good evening. Let me offer you a formal and official welcome to the New York Avenue Presbyterian Church. I am Reverend Dr. Sarah Johnson, I'm the senior pastor here at the church, and it is a true privilege to welcome you to our church and to this important event this evening. We are honored to be hosting this event as we gather to assess the impact of the recent presidential election on the state of Black America and the broader Pan-African world, and to offer space to engage in thoughtful reflection, in candid conversation, and in dialogue. If you were downstairs before tonight's event began, you might have heard Dr. Daniels mention that this church has a rich and storied history, part of which includes Abraham Lincoln, the reluctant emancipator who most often sat in the second pew, right here on the lectern side. This church does have a rich history of lots of folks, but we are not a museum. We believe that that rich history is what promotes our ministry and our passion to do what we believe we should do in following Jesus Christ in the present. And so we serve this community, this neighborhood, seven days a week. In fact, if you hear a few chairs scraping as we are doing our event tonight, it is because upstairs on the fifth floor, there are 90 student tutor pairs from across the district who come together every week to learn with and for one another. We also worship every Sunday as a community at 10:00 a.m. I would not be a pastor if I didn't extend a warm welcome to each of you to join us anytime you would like. Standing as we do at this critical intersection between faith and politics and justice, both in this building, but also in this city, let me offer to bring in a spirit and to invite a spirit of God's wisdom and God's justice as we begin our conversation and our time. So let me open us with a word of prayer. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening in a spirit of hope. We acknowledge the weight of this moment, concerns that weigh on our hearts, and yet we know and trust that you walk with us in every moment of our lives. And so be among us this night. Give us courage to speak with truth and the compassion to listen to one another. Grant us the clarity to see paths towards justice and liberation, not just for some, but for all. May this gathering be a place of inspiration and bold action. So we commit this time to you, trusting that as you always do, you will guide us forward in faith and hope. In your name we pray. Amen.
H-U.
No.
Good evening. My name is Miyuki Williams, interim general manager, WPFW Jazz and Justice Radio. Thank you. It is a profound honor to stand with and in support of the Institute of the Black World Twenty First Century, a pillar of transformative advocacy and enduring force for justice and change in our communities. I'd like to thank Dr. Ron Daniels for the invitation, for the media sponsorship that makes this collaboration possible. I would also like to acknowledge my colleagues from the WPFW family, brilliant scholar Dr. Julian Malvoe, and Reverend Grayland Hagler, yeah, you can give it to her. Reverend Grayland Hagler, recent recipient of the Paul Robinson Peace and Justice Award, as well as many, many others. I'm in awe to be in the presence of all you luminaries, whose voices illuminate and inspire the path forward. WPFW shares a deep commitment to your mission and values. As a station dedicated to independent media and progressive voices, we see our collaboration as an essential bridge to amplify voices of those working to address systemic inequities, foster unity, and create tangible solutions for our collective struggles. WPFW is proud to be the media sponsor for the Institute of the Black World Twenty First Century, reflecting on our shared dedication to uplifting and advancing these critical efforts. We find ourselves at a pivotal moment. Last week's election was a surprise to many, as well as a disappointment, a stark reminder of the complexities and challenges we continue to face. We must remember the wisdom of Sun Tzu, "In the midst of defeat, there is opportunity." This is not a moment to resign ourselves to despair, rather, it is an opportunity to engage with renewed passion and purpose. In moments of setback, there is room to reimagine, reorganize, and reignite the fight for freedom and equity. It is a call to stand vigilant, ensuring that the principles of democracy, equality, and justice prevail. We must channel our efforts into creative, determined, and peaceful actions that advances better lives for all, today and for every tomorrow that follows. Through mutual engagement and collective power, we have the tools to shift narratives, to shape policy, and to inspire hope. Even when the path forward appears fraught with obstacle, obstacles, history teaches us that transformation often arises from ashes of struggle. As we look to the road ahead, WPFW remains dedicated to broadcasting the crucial dialogues, initiatives, and stories that strengthen our communities and deepens our resolve. We recognize that together we are stronger, together we can amplify the messages that empower, the music that heals, and the stories that bring light to darkness. Together, we will continue to shine the light where there is none, speak truth to power, and build a better, more equitable world, one broadcast, one story, and one action at a time. Thank you very much for your work, thank you for being here.
Thank you for those lovely words, Miyuki. Mayuki? Miyuki. All right, we're going to get that right. So now I'd like to bring to the stage Dr. Ron Daniels and Dr. Julian Malvoe.
We have a very special moment. Let's give WPFW a big round of applause, by the way. They certainly pushed it hard, as did The Informer and Hazel Price Edney and so forth, so the word is out. Who knows, you know, they, you know, our people come, they come adrift and in a little at a time. But we now have the honor of doing something very special for a few moments, and it comes from having experienced and having been at the Congressional Black Caucus Reparations Session, and we had a distinguished warrior woman, freedom fighter, who was on the panel, and it was interesting because a lot of people didn't even know who she was. And I'm not indicting anybody, but I think we have an obligation to remember those, Fannie DuHamer said, "Always remember where we came from and all of the bridges that brought us over." Well, one of the bridges and staunch figures that held the fort in a time not quite as bad as this, but we've been dealing with, see, back in the day, our folks used to call them revlish, them revlish white folks for a long time. So she held the fort, and administrations that wanted to kill affirmative action, wanted to peel it back, and a number of other things. That's none other than Mary Frances Berry. So Dr. J, would you come and, we want to present her with an award that we really wanted to do last year, but she couldn't make it, and I said, "Well, why not now?" So would you please come and accept this award on behalf of the Institute of the Black World Twenty First Century, this Legacy Award? And this Legacy Award says, "Presented to Mary Frances Berry for your fierce and effective protection and advancement of the interests of African-Americans as chairperson of the U.S. Civil Rights Commission, and your dedication to reparatory justice in the spirit of Cali House." Dr. J, would you offer some comments as your soror, I understand?
My soror, my shero, my role model for the good stuff. And she didn't role model the bad stuff. Y'all know the bad stuff. She didn't do that.
Yeah, that's right.
But the good, nothing whatsoever. I just have such fond memories of you back in the day, 80, when, I would tell a story that you might not like, but you won't mind. Remember when, okay, I've been in church, when Clarence Pendleton became the head of the Civil Rights Commission, you have been, and I, so I'm interviewing you for essence, and you were respectful, and I wasn't, until you said, "And tell Penny." I said, "Penny, what's that?" She said, "Well, you ain't, he ain't worth a quarter. His name was Pendleton, Clarence Pendleton." And she said, "Tell Penny." So anyway, but consummate scholar, great sense of humor, incisive, incisive, and the things that you've written have really inspired us all. You have, I mean, I have to tell you, there's so many times when I think about you when I'm writing, and I'm, when I write, I'm like, hmm, wonder if she would like this piece? But I don't run it by you, because I don't run my stuff by anybody. But, but I think about you, I say, "Okay." No, you, you have been a role model, inspiration, a sorority loves you, you were on our distinguished professor committee, the Delta Sigma Theta, which had a two-year rotating scholarship, a professorship that went through the HBCUs. In fact, you were responsible, I believe, for Bennett getting one, which, when I was president of Bennett, which I remain grateful of. And so, not only do you mean a lot to me personally, but you mean a lot to Black women scholars, many of whom, as Dr. D mentioned, sisters who have basically labored in the vineyards for years, written amazing things, and nobody knows their name. Somebody might know the footnote or something else, but nobody does, but we know your name, Mary Frances Berry. We know your name, and we are going to keep saying your name, and saying your name, and saying your name, until generations upon generations upon generations understand what you have done. I am grateful to you, but I know I speak to everybody here, and they say they're grateful as well. Thank you, my sister.
I appreciate this, I appreciate this very much. I was about to say that I wouldn't say anything, I guess you folks can sit down, and I'm not going to make a speech because you've got a program, but I do want to say that what I represent in terms of my mind, what I see myself as, is I represent the fact that you can overcome. The fact that I'm here, because there's no reason why I should be here, given everything that has happened in my life. The KGB tried to do some bad stuff to me when I led a delegation to Russia during the Carter administration. I was a reporter in Vietnam and during, in combat, and could have died many times, as well as all the other people who did. The kind of life I led, which I have shared with people as a child, and where I came from, but I'm here. And as I tell people too, that as historians, we know that we always go back. I told these people that on BBC the other day about what's going on now, that we make progress, and then we fall back. There's backlash, there's always backlash, you know that, and then we move forward again. But that the main thing is that not only do we not lose hope, but we do what my mother used to say to me all the time, when I'd go to her complaining about something that happened that I thought was evil, or didn't like it, or whatever, or just, she would say, "Get up off your do-nothing stool and go do something about it," instead of whining to me. And that's what I tell all of the people in my family, and that's what I've told my students, and that's what I say to you, and that's what I try to do myself. And so, thank you very much, Ron, and I'm glad that you are gathered here, because there should be people gathered in many places around this country, and they are some places, trying to strategize and figure out what to do. Men who have, are now gone on, Randall Robinson, Bill Lucy, my friends, who, we spent hours at my house, strategizing every time we thought there was a problem and we needed to solve it, you know that, and we would come up with a strategy, but it was painful and it was work, okay? And it was a lot of work too, because I never fed them anything, so you feed the people. And Roger Wilkinson used to tease me and say, "You don't even have a potato in this house." And, but anyway, so get up, you're getting up off your do-nothing stools, you are doing something. And that's the message that we have to give, and that change will come, it has come, I'm still standing here, it has come, and I've seen it come in my lifetime. So, and thank you very much, Ron, for the award.
Here's what I want to do, come here. What you want to do.
Okay, so I think this is the part a lot of us have been waiting for, which is the part where we speak to our panelists. So I'm going to say your name, and if you could just, you know, stand up and wave and let everyone know who you are, just your title, that would be great. So I'm gonna start with Hillary's... Well, actually, I'll tell your title, make it easier for you guys. So the first person will be Hillary Shelton. Can you please wave, Hillary Shelton? Thank you. Oh, yes, please. Hillary Shelton is the Senior Vice President of Governance and Policy for the NAACP. Then I'd like to introduce Dr. Melina Abdullah. Dr. Melina is the National Director of the Black Lives Matter grassroots. Next, Dr. George Fraser, President and CEO of FraserNet. Next, Robin Rue Simmons, the founder of First Repair, Mel Foot. Mel is the President and CEO of Constituacy for Africa. Next, Dr. Julian Malvo, educated author and political economist. Mark Marial. Mark is the President and CEO of National Urban League. Melanie L. Melanie is the President and CEO of National Coalition for Black Civic Participation. Maurice Mitchell. Maurice is the National Director, Working Families Party. Next, I'd like to Reverend Siobhan Arlene Bradley, Our Line, apologies, President and CEO of National Council of Negro Women. Next, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Jones Austin Esquire. Jennifer is the CEO and Federation of Protestant Welfare Agencies. And I would like to now do the honorable mention of Reverend Graylin Hagler, Senior Advisor and Fellowship for Reconciliation USA. All right. I'd like to now welcome to the stage Dr. Ron Daniels again.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Talley. Did we forget somebody?
Yes, I did not. Are we good? Did everybody's name get mentioned? Okay, perfect.
We got them all. We don't need no more. We got plenty. Let's give our moderator, MC, a big round of applause. Thank you so much for being here. Just a slight deviation from the printed program for a good reason, but I also would just like to acknowledge the President of the Ambassador from Tanzania, who's been kind enough to be here by way of the invitation of our Secretary of State, Mel Foot, and that is Ambassador Elsa Kanza of Tanzania. And boy, I have some stories to talk about Tanzania, going all the way back to the... Well, I won't tell how old I am till later. But we also have a very special person in the room that's very near and dear to our hearts, because we say that the fruit does not fall very far from the tree. And unfortunately, we miss the Honorable Sheila Jackson Lee, the most tireless visionary warrior, working on... I mean, I love John Condon, he was my best friend in Congress and all that, but no one did more to advance the cause of federal reparations than the Honorable Sheila Jackson And so we're delighted that her daughter, who is standing at her seat and is in the interim position as the Congressperson, would just drop by to say hello to us. So would you please welcome Congresswoman Erica Lee Carter?
I just want to say it's always a good time to be with people that care about equity and justice and repair for what has been done to our communities across time. I'm Erica Lee Carter, the only daughter of Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, newly sworn in on Tuesday, and so glad to... And so glad to be here with you. I joined calls in the fall to receive updates on this national movement, and it never dies because we're still here and we're still pushing, and I'm here to join you and be in it with you. So thank you.
Okay, we want to now get to... It's all substantive. You know, we have to greet and honor each other and say the anthem and all those good things. And we hope you'll be patient, by the way. You know, we have this thing, "Ah, but it's gotta be quick." The soundbite is real quick and all that, but you know, some things don't lend themselves to being brief. Now, we don't have to be long for the sake of being long. But when we're talking about the kind of era we're in now, it may require some time. That's why I said this is like a great camp meeting. We hope to give you some information, inspiration, and some marching orders as well. And so, to tee the conversation up, and someone, a couple people said, "Well, why you... Why you calling on Mark Marial?" You know, they weren't being negative, they just saw his name there. I said, "Well, because the Urban League, the National Urban League, has become... is our legacy organization that annually presents the state of Black America." And so, the way I roll is to try to not separate, and I try to reinforce those roles. You're talking about the heavyweight champion of voter registration, you're talking about Melanie Campbell. I'm not trying to replace her. I can't replace her. So we try to respect those roles. So that's why I thought it was important for Mark Marial to tee up the conversation. And then we want, we're gonna call on everyone to, in the first round, to respond, in whatever way you choose to respond, in your own voice, given the crisis of the moment. But I could think of no better person than the Urban League that pulls the data together. And quite frankly, at the last meeting, there was a warning about white supremacy. I remember that, and so forth. So anyway, it is for that reason, I hope you all forgive me, but I'm not apologizing, that I am recognizing now our distinguished President of the National Urban League for an opening statement to frame the conversation, Mark Marial.
Let me just say thank you, and we owe our brother Ron Daniels for his indefatigable spirit, hard work. Ron, his ability to pull us together time and time again is indeed remarkable. Ron just celebrated his 39th birthday. And his energy is admirable. And the Institute of the Black World has, for many decades, stood as a place where unapologetic, serious conversation can be had about the state of Black people, not only in the United States, but in the world. So let's give Ron another big, warm round of applause. You know, I've got lots of mixed emotions now. Some of my emotions would not be described with language appropriate for a church. It'd be more appropriate for the corner or the street. But those mixed emotions represent sort of a tension sometimes between the head and the heart in the moment. I liken this moment to that moment when you're flying on a plane and the pilot says, "Ladies and gentlemen, seat belts, please." And then the pilot very quickly says, "Flight attendants, take your seats." And says, "We're about to go through moderate turbulence, but you know it's gonna be heavy turbulence. We need to buckle up and take our seats. We are going to go through a significant amount of turbulence over the next several weeks, months, and years, given the outcome of this election." Period and full stop. Now, I look back on the last four years with, again, mixed emotions. In some instances, three things that were central to what we would call the Black Agenda did not get done. The John Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act passed the House of Representatives twice and was blocked by a Senate filibuster on a continuous basis. Number two, the George Floyd Justice in Policing Bill, which was an accountability bill, and I would describe it as substantive but modest, did not even get a vote in the House of Representatives. Thirdly, the proposed Commission on Reparations. Again, HR40, championed by our sister Sheila Jackson Lee, never got to a vote in the House of Representatives. And it underscores how difficult it is, even when you believe you've elected allies to power, it is to get things done that we know are central to equity and justice. But I reflect on some history. 1876. 1876 was an election. We know about the Hayes-Tilden Compromise that took the federal troops out of the South. But one point that we don't talk about enough is that it also led to a court-packing effort by Southerners, which in 1883 led to the Supreme Court striking down the Civil Rights Act of 1866. If you go back, Ron Daniels, and look at the Civil Rights Act of 1866, it eerily looks and reads like the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The 1876 election also set into place the events and the momentum and the rise and legitimization of the Ku Klux Klan, and the terrorism of violence that was carried out against our people, and ultimately, the 1896 decision of Plessy, which constitutionalized segregation in this country. But we think about the 1968 election. The 1968 election when Nixon and his Southern Strategy and his silent majority augmented by the candidacy of George Wallace, got 12% of the popular vote, led to the Nixon administration and the policy of what Daniel Patrick Moynihan called benign neglect, and the assaults on affirmative action, but also the recomposition of the Supreme Court, which I would argue began the setting into motion of what we've seen in the last, not only 24 months, but in 10 years with Shelby Decision, the decision on college admissions, and the decision in DODs. So we are at a moment when no one has a pure crystal ball and can say that this is gonna be a moment, or is this gonna be the beginning of an epic in time that is going to assault and challenge us on so many fronts? That's the moment. It is not easy to stand up a coherent strategy going forward instantaneously that all buy into. You can have a strategy in your head, in your mind, eight to 10 of us as organizational leaders can, can we get our community to buy into it? I spent time in Detroit, in 10 barber shops, Atlanta, North Carolina, Philadelphia, knocking on doors, speaking to people in the community. And what I was struck by is, this is nothing new, it's the lack of enthusiasm and faith that any electoral victory can change the economic conditions or the social conditions of our community. Now, I'm not gonna suggest that that is a widespread view in Black America, but it's a significant enough view.
Yes.
Right? That people have lost confidence, and it's a bit of depression, it's a bit of dejection, and it is very, very real. And I will tell you, we have to not just discuss it from a diagnostic point of view, but we have to discuss it from the point of view of how we can begin to address it. In... I have a 22-year-old son, voted for the first time in 2020. In June, he and his friends were gathered around. I said, "Let's... Can I talk to you guys a little bit?" I said, "What are you hearing from your friends about voting in this election?" He said, "Look, Dad," straight up, "2020, we voted because of the Black Lives Matter movement, and because of the death of George Floyd, and there were impulses beyond the candidates we don't feel at this time." He says, "So I don't really know." He says, "We're gonna vote, but I was asking, 'What do you feel and hear from your peers?'" And it was a warning sign, a shot, early on, that developing any sense of mass enthusiasm might be challenging and different. Now, we know that underlying these election results was, in some parts of this nation, an affirmation of, I'm gonna use the term that many of them have used on us, white identity politics. I saw Fareed Zakaria talking about identity politics. I wanted to jump into the debate and say, "Identity politics is white supremacy politics." And you cannot... You cannot not talk about whether that was an underlying effect. The way I read it is, it is why the polling was so off. What we have in America today is an inversion to the old Bradley Effect. Y'all remember the Bradley Effect?
Yes.
Tom Bradley ran for Governor of California, 1982. Polls showed him five points ahead going into the election, and on Election Day, he lost by two points. And they called it the Bradley Effect, that voters would not say. And I think now you had the same thing on the Trump side. People who wouldn't tell the pollster, they might even tell the pollster, "I vote for somebody else." And on Election Day, go pull that lever. So this frames, we have been here before, all of us. Everyone here is an activist. Everyone here has been in this fight for many, many years. I will say this, somehow, some way, I look out with great respect at us in the crowd. We've got to stand up, this next generation leadership. We have to get people in their 20s, their 30s, and their 40s to engage in serious organizing beyond, "Am I an Instagram influencer?" Beyond whether I simply can talk... Beyond whether I simply can talk a good talk or make some noise? And I don't disrespect Instagram influencers, but it's not enough. It takes a lot more to bring about social and economic change. So, Ron, I'm glad to be here today. I hope that helps frame, maybe set up, what I know will be an extremely substantive discussion. And I hope we can be a combination of diagnostic and prescriptive. And I say this, look, our community is more varied and diverse than it has ever been on many, many fronts. We have different strands of political thought and philosophy. We now have significant parts of our community of Caribbean and African descent. We have blended families. My own older daughter's mom is Liberian. We have a lot of different things happening and going on. We also have a younger generation for whom civil rights, the Black Power Movement, the Black Consciousness Movement, is grainy old films and ancient history that don't relate as emotionally as it does for many of us. So we've got to recognize these realities as we think as leaders about how we go forward and what guidance we want to give those who listen to our voices in this moment. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we want to, we want to hear from our panel, and I'm going to go first to Reverend Shavon Arline Bradley. And delighted to have you here. And I say that because I also think that there are a lot of people who don't know enough about the National Council of Negro Women. I mean, Mary McLeod Bethune, and, I mean, all of the incredible work. And there's a sister who's around her named Janice Mathis, and I know her, and I made a commitment, I said, look, whenever we do something, National Council of Negro Women will always be there. We have the floor for your reaction and your summation and what you feel is important in this moment.
So, thank you so much, and awesome to be on a panel with folks that I love and some that I don't know, and great to be in the House of the Lord tonight, honoring the pastor who was a woman. Amen. And I want to just offer that in the context of how I do this work. So first, let me just apologize, I have to pick up my son. I'm also a mother of a little child, and so I have to pick him up from the basketball court tonight, but I did want to be here to be able to offer this context. First of all, N C N W will be ninety years old this year, twenty-twenty-five. And we still serve as the only Black and woman-owned building on Pennsylvania Avenue.
That's right.
I want to be very clear, when we activated this with Underdark, the Irene Height, who was our longest-serving president, maybe if you're from the DC area, you know Dr. Height, you knew about the Black Family Reunion, you knew about N C N W. But for decades, our organization has done two things. One, organized Black institutions. Mary McLeod Bethune was an institutionalist. She believed in activating not only young people, but she gathered on December fifth, nineteen thirty-five, twenty-two, Black women's national organizations and said, if I can get Black women to agree on political, economic, and social justice areas, I believe we can change the trajectory of our women. And that was in the middle of the Depression. This is how visionary she was in the context of the work. If you know about Bethune-Cookman University, she founded a university. And I don't think that people know the history. She was also the only Black woman who stood on the grounds of the United Nations, informing the actual development of the United Nations. So we need to talk about N C N W in the context of who we were as a founding organization, but also where we are now. I am the youngest person to ever sit in a seat like this. I am in my forties, so I was laughing at Mark, like he's talking about me. And it is a joy to sit in a space to recognize that I'm a Generation X student of the movement. I was trained by baby boomers, but I activate millennials and Gen Zs and Gen Alphas. And the superpower of Black women is institutionalism and intergenerational leadership. Black mothers can make anybody do anything. A child will move, a grown woman will move, a grown man will move, on the activation of Black women. And so for the work that I want to respond to specifically, I want to say three things on policy. In the response to what's happening now, I want to activate the Department of Agriculture and Department of Health and Human Services. My reactions are heavy because my background's in public health. And I'm watching this country is about to be led by RFK Junior for the Department of Health and Human Services. And I want you to understand what that means. That means basic preventive medicine that has been practical in our country because of the backs of Black leadership in public health may shift backwards fifty years. You think about the polio vaccine. You think about vaccines for COVID-nineteen. We have someone now who is about to say that basic prevention should no longer be a standard in our country. I'm lifting up the Department of Agriculture because I'm also in population health, which means women, infant, children, Farm Bill, meaning the food stamp programs for families that are in transition, Medicaid, Medicare, these are all of our safety nets. They are literally now potentially going to be not codified for this next administration. And what does that mean for seniors, for persons who are living with disabilities, for mothers and children? That means that they may not have access to food. And who are we as social justice leaders if we do not activate around not just the justice side of this, but the humanity side of this work? And I'm here representing the voice of every mother who's trying to feed their child, of every family who is trying to make ends meet, of every school that's trying to figure out how to activate and not remove Black history from schools. Six hundred and nineteen pieces of legislation and of referendums across the country to remove basic curricula around Black history is unconscionable. And yet and still, a potential president-elect now stating publicly that he will remove diversity, equity, and inclusion. What that means is if you do not use the words, you will not do the work. And we're standing on a collective agenda to be able to activate families, citizens that activate in healthcare, in education, in transportation, but the last thing is economic development. Your bottom line will now be affected. And so I know we'll talk more about that, but I wanted to offer those things as highlights for you. And N C N W is here to activate. We activated over two hundred thousand voters over eight states in eight weeks because we have women and families that are activating our right to vote. It's now time to reorganize and activate on the ground. It's going to be bottom-up, top-down, hands locked, and brothers and sisters together, not following the propaganda that we're apart.
All right. All right. You know, I think the other thing that becomes useful in the conversation, I'm just going to inject this, is sometimes it becomes important to try to translate to our sisters and brothers on the ground who delivered those things. You know, one of the, we had this conversation about the Biden administration and some of the incredible things that happened. And I'm kind of crude, you know, Joe Madison used to say, we have to put it down where the ghosts can get it. So how do you feed people and then don't tell them where the food came from? How do you have advances that have been made even where white women are benefiting from being in positions of power, it was not conservative white movements that produced that? So I'm just saying that it's important that we be able to interpret to our folks, you know, where are things coming from? What, these parties that are irrelevant, that ain't doing anything, so forth and so on? What's happening in that regard? Jennifer Jones Austin, you and I had some real good conversations, and you, I was saying, let's jump on the Kamala bandwagon, and you had some stark warnings. And you don't need to necessarily talk about that, but you were saying, I don't know, Dr. D., I don't know where white women are going to go on this question. So I want to turn to you for your opening comments, your assessment of where we are.
So let me jump right in here. First, let me thank you for this opportunity to be sitting with the esteemed panel and all who are in the audience, who I'm sure have their thoughts to share as well. Let me first just clarify something for everybody. It wasn't that I wasn't with Kamala.
Oh, I know that.
Right? But I want everybody else to understand what was happening at the time was it was in early July, and there was a movement. There was a push to move Biden out. And we were in a conversation, and I said, and I actually put this on social media, and I got slammed by some of my Black sisters in leadership. I said, because it was like, they better not move Biden out and step over Kamala Harris. And I said, they're slow to move because they're engaged in a probability calculus. And I said, the probability calculus is that they are trying to assess whether Kamala Harris is more electable than is Joe Biden. I was not speaking at all to credentials and qualifications, but rather, what I was speaking to is very recent history precedent that showed us that in twenty sixteen, fifty-six percent of white men and fifty-three percent of white women said to the person who then was the most qualified to ever run for the United States President, that she should not be in office. Hear me, fifty-six percent of white men and fifty-three percent of white women said no to a white woman. Now, when we have lived through slavery and white women allowing our sisters, our ancestral sisters, to be treated as they were, when we have lived through the suffragists movement, the feminist movement, and still today, issues of pay inequity, where they're not looking at how Black women are treated, when they talk about pay equity and fair pay, when they talk about, or do not talk about occupational segregation, the writing was on the wall. And why? Because racism and sexism, along with militarism, have proven the most powerful tools for upholding what is foundational in this nation, structural economic deprivation. Dr. King taught us, Fred Hampton taught us, my father wrote in the book God in the Ghetto in nineteen seventy-nine, that what we are dealing with is a system, a system of capitalism, militarism, and racism, and I add misogyny, working together to continually oppress people of color. Racism, sexism, misogyny are tools. They are not the end game. They are the tools to uphold this system of economic deprivation. So we have to understand that until you address what is foundational in nature, you're just going to keep doing the same thing over and over and over and expecting different results. So what we're grappling with right now, my friends, is what the General Counsel to Bishop Desmond Tutu told me when I was centering on racial justice in New York City and changing the New York City Charter, the Constitution. He said, Jennifer, be ever reminded that those who created the system created it to persist, no matter what. That's why they're comfortable right now with dismantling, if they have to, what we call a democracy, which isn't really a true democracy, because at the end of the day, the system of unjust capitalism that puts white male on top and the polar opposite, as my dad said, a system, a simple surface diagnosis of the system reveals a sick sociology based on a faulty anthropology which emanates from a false theology. The false theology is that God is white and white male. So anthropologically, the white male is most like God, so the white male is supreme, and God has ordained it. And so then sociologically, you order your society, white male on top, Black person, and the polar opposite of the white male, the Black female on the bottom. That is why today, in twenty twenty-four, the Black woman, it is A-OK for her to be the most educated segment of our society and earn just sixty-four cents on the dollar compared to a white man. So this is what you're seeing right now. The system is working just the way it was created to work. And until, my friends, we develop strategies that focus on the foundational structural underpinnings, what really is the game, until we do both and, the structural, and then all this systematic, programmatic, policy to policy, president, you know, like president to president, until we address that structural, we're just going to keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results.
I've got a little bell over here. I got, you know, somebody's holding a sign over there. We want to hold it, and I don't have to ring the bell, but I will ring the bell, so, I don't know. But we're moving on, and it's very rich, and we'll be a little creative about this in terms of how we move.
Dr. D., closer to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Because I can't stand up for seventy-five minutes or whatever the thing is, or fifty minutes, or whatever. So I'm saying, I got a little bell over here, and I just want to make sure we keep people reasonably within their time. So I see your hand, George Fraser, but I'm holding on you for a minute. So just, I want to go to Reverend Hagler. Reverend Hagler has been holding down some serious spaces in a lot of places, in a lot of ways. And some of the issues that he was dealing with were issues that cropped up in the campaign and were issues that people were concerned about deeply in our community. But you can speak in whatever way you want to, Reverend Hagler. Thank you so much for your years and years of service, Reverend Gregor.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you so much. I wrote a paper after the election, an article. It was entitled, Trump: An Orgy of White Maleness, because white males celebrating, they were celebrating throughout the campaign. And it, Trump talked about, make America great again. White males heard, make white maleness superior again. Because what had been taught is that white males had become the minority in this country and in the world. And I was sensing that. It's misogynistic, yes, but it's also built on this paradigm of white supremacy. And folks were afraid to deal with white supremacy, whether within this border or in Palestine or across the continent of Africa. People are afraid to talk about the evils of white supremacy and what it has meant historically to all of us and to the world. One of the things that I've been trying to teach is you can't stand up against white supremacy if you don't stand up against it wherever it is on the globe, that you're a hypocrite and you weaken the movement against dealing with white supremacy. But we've got to remember, and I'm glad it was pointed out, sexism is a part of white supremacy. Racism, of course, is a part of white supremacy. It's just ironic to me, because I heard folks talking about, and I'm going to put it out there, if y'all don't mind, I know I'm in the church raft, but as one preacher said to me, he says, why would I vote for a pussy to put her in the White House? That's how deep the hatred is around women, that folks can vote for a white man, but definitely not a woman of color, no matter what she had. And you know, it goes back to my seminary days. We were pushing for a We were pushing for a fat black faculty person at Chicago Theological Seminary. And I had let us strike of the students. So they agreed to have us engage in the interview. Very brilliant brother from South Africa was a finalist, Simon Mameliah, who had not only one PhD, but two. And then there was, he was up against a white man who hadn't even got his PhD yet, hadn't even finished his comprehension exams. And the white student said about the South African, "I really don't believe he's qualified." That's what we deal with over and over again. Let me just say this, and I'll end on this. Screw the Republicans. What we got to be about is organizing our community, because folks, because even our friends, we had to kick their butt in order to get what we got. Whether you're talking about voting rights or anything that we struggle with, our friends had to be made to do it. And the thing is, we wanted to protect our children from the struggle rather than tell them the story of the struggle. The Bible says, "Teach them. When you're lying down, when you get up, when you're at table, tell the story." Because once we begin to forget, we'll cease to exist. We'll exist based upon our memory and our telling of the story.
All right. Thank you very much. You know that, um, I watched, I watched, I watched Michael Eric Dyson on a show the other day, and he called, he coined a term called Afro-nnesia, Afro-nnesia, the fact that we have forgotten, that we don't remember. And you know, I think it's important to sort of pinpoint the fact that we had, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Be careful. We had a scenario where someone at a rally said, in effect, that Kamala Harris was a hooker, and people applauded that. And then Vice President, the Vice Presidential candidate said, "We got to clean the trash out of our system, and that trash is Kamala Harris." So the question becomes, at the level of racial pride and racial dignity, how does any black man vote for someone who says that about one of our sisters? I mean, so I'm saying that it happened, and I'm not, you know, we, but we got to figure that out, because that, that, how did that happen, right? Now, talking about different ways and different avenues, we have a brother on the stage who's been trying to figure that out too, you know, who's affectionately called Comrade Mo. He's somebody who, you know, was behind helping to put together the Movement for Black Lives, one of the brains behind that and whatever, patiently doing organizing around this very question of to screw the Democrats or not to screw the Democrats, to screw the Republicans or not to screw, what is the way forward? Comrade Mo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. D. So I lead the Working Families Party, which is an independent grassroots third-party movement. We often call ourselves a non-delusional third party. What I mean by that is that we've been around for twenty-six years. In nineteen ninety-two, in that election, there was a third-party candidate, Ross Perot. He was a billionaire. He spent all of his money, and he didn't break twenty percent, he got eighteen point nine percent. A few years later, the folks who developed the Working Families Party took that information and decided that building a president, presidential candidacy as a way to, as a venue to build a third party was not a strategy that they felt as working people would be a viable strategy. So since then, they've been building it county by county, city by city, state by state. We started in New York State, where there's something called fusion voting. So for people who vote in New York, in the state of Connecticut, in the state of Oregon, can vote on the Working Families Party line. And we, in the binary choice between Donald Trump and Kamala Harris, we, as an independent third party, endorsed the candidate of another party, because we felt in that binary choice was a choice between advancing fascism and creating enough space for us to organize on the grassroots level of third space in American politics. And in those places, folks were able to vote for Kamala Harris on the Working Families Party line. In other places, for example, in the city of Philadelphia, we've defeated the Republicans and kicked them off of Philly City Council. So Philadelphia is a two-party city, the Democrats and the Working Families Party, where Kendra Brooks and Nicholas O'Rourke, independent, progressive, working-class black voices, represent all the citizens of Philadelphia and govern for the interest of working-class people, especially working-class black people in neighborhoods like Nice Town, and deliver. Why is that important? Because we're having this conversation, where we're talking about, screw the Republicans, screw the Democrats, we need to organize. There are brothers and sisters that are organizing independent black political power today and yesterday, and will continue to organize. Like I say, you don't need to get ready if you are ready, right? And so it's not about now we need to organize, you need to join the folks who have been organizing independent political black power, right? We have a rigid two-party system. It's a, it's a rigid two-party system. It's one of the most rigid and undemocratic two-party systems in the world, by far, by far. And if we want, like you said, if we want a different outcome, we need a different strategy. If you don't know your strategy, you're living in somebody else's strategy. I didn't say we need different tactics, we need a different strategy. Project Twenty Twenty Five is real, by the way. It's not cap, it's real. And it has been in existence on the local level, on the state level. Talk to folks who live in Georgia, talk to folks who live in Louisiana, talk to folks who live in any place where Republicans have governing power, and they'll tell you about how real Project Twenty Twenty Five is. It's now going to be visited on all of us. And we can't just organize as individuals, we need to organize inside of organizations in order to not simply push back against Project Twenty Twenty Five. But our job is to understand that Project Twenty Twenty Five and the Trump election is the byproduct of five decades of organizing, resourcing, and planning, right? The Heritage Foundation was developed in the seventies, right? When their movement was in the dumps, when the racist right and Christian right and corporate right needed to develop a strategy, and they did, and they built organizations, and they built a plan. They didn't win every single election, but their plan continued. Donald Trump isn't the author of Trumpism. Donald Trump just happens to be one of the main characters of Trumpism. We have to ask ourselves a question. Do we want to be bit characters in the Trumpist novel, or do we want to write our own story? And the way that we as black people write our own story is to get serious about a black agenda, black organization, and a plan. They have a five, they have a fifty-year plan? What is our fifty-year plan, right? And then during losses, when you have a plan, you don't go into despair, and during wins, you don't experience this irrational exuberance like we did in two thousand and eight. You focus on your plan, you focus on building organization, you focus on the ideological direction that will allow you to achieve the outcomes and the agenda that you set forth. We have to, listen, like, there's one party that wants to kill us, and there's another party that has historically taken us for granted. When will we decide, and hopefully this electoral loss will finally allow us to decide, to focus on building our own independent politics, so that we could leverage our own independent politics on both of the parties in the two-party system? That, to me, is the only route out of this, and it's happening. So I invite everybody that's interested to learn more about the Working Families Party, to understand that this path will not be easy. I hope people are prepared for hard work, because hard work is ahead of us. You can't organize, you can't microwave justice. It happens through hard work, perseverance, discipline, study, and solidarity. The last thing, and I know I have to stop, the last thing I'll say is that black people always understand the assignment. So I was in North Philly, I was in Atlanta. Look, a lot of black people have no fidelity to the two-party system, to the Democrat, but we understand the assignment. So ninety-two percent of black women, seventy-eight percent of black men voted our interests, voted strategically, because we understood that there was a right question nationalist agenda, and then there was an agenda that gave us more space. But that doesn't mean that we're owned by the Democratic Party. The way that we have to move forward, going forward, is to decide if we want to simply survive or if we want to thrive. I'm interested in the politics of thriving and no longer the politics of survival. And so that means all of us getting together and deciding to build those politics. If everybody in this room decides that we leave to develop a black agenda and then stick by it, there's nothing that we can't do. Our votes are, are paramount to both the continued progress of the Democratic Party and for whatever the Republicans do, right? Which is why they spend so much time with the gold sneakers and the, the STEMI checks and the misinformation and the disinformation. But we didn't get it twisted. But now we have a different assignment. We were in a united front with a whole lot of folks. I call it the Cheney, DeChamsky United Front. That's over. Now it's time to chart our own way, if we choose. And do we have the stomach? Are we brave enough? Are we bold enough? This is an authoritarian moment. Authoritarian moments require boldness, requires us to not choose to acquiesce, to not choose to obey in advance. Many will choose to be, many will choose to, this is the last thing I'll say, Dr. D, in this moment, and we'll see folks of all colors choose to decide if, if they're going to be the, the king of the dogs, right? The king of the dogs. The king of the dogs is the dog of the king. So do we want to be the dog of the king, or do we want to actually be kings and queens? And if we want to do that, we have to build our own politics.
All right. Now, Dr. Belina Abdullah, not every, we don't all agree on things, you know what I mean? This Reverend Hagler says, screw the, screw the Democrats and screw this one. I, you know, and he got a big cheer in the audience, so they're gonna boo me, because I have, I have a different philosophy on that. Mo has talked about a third way, a third force, and it's a kind of fusion. So there are times when you support the Democrats and maybe so far and so on. You took the radical position, you were the vice presidential candidate for Cornel West, one of the most popular figures of our time. So, so where did you come down? Why, what, what, why did you take that path in this, not only in this moment, what, what was your analysis, and where do you see where we are now?
Sure. So thank you so much, Dr. Daniels, for inviting me. Thank you to the Institute for the Black World. And one of the reasons I think many of us are all here is to hear from each other. So to be sitting here with Dr. Malvo, who's who I want to be when I grow up, but also to have my little niecey poo out here, Deja, H-U-U Now, Junior at Howard University, and then my Howard University classmates here, it means the world for us to be able to come together and kind of assess what just happened, but more importantly, chart a course forward. So the last time I was on a stage with Mark Mariel, he won't remember, but I do, was in twenty sixteen at the Congressional Black Caucus. And we were invited to do that opening plenary. And one of the things that I said that caused me to never have been invited back to the CBC, is if the Democratic Party wants our vote, they got to run better candidates than Hillary Clinton. Well, what just happened is they didn't run a better candidate. And I'm just going to be straight up. Kamala Harris might have had the vibes, she might have been able to pay the ten million dollars for Beyonce or five million dollars for Megan Thee Stallion or one point eight million for Eminem. She might be, have been able to get influencers out there, but we have to remember that when you cast someone who is, and I understand Donald Trump to be the absolute devil incarnate, he is the devil incarnate. This is not a joke. This is, you know, I know that when we saw Matt Gaetz, Matt Gaetz, you put him, you're putting a child rapist on your cabinet, right? This is sick, but you can't counter evil with a lesser evil. And we have to remember that Kamala Harris, for many of us, even though she felt better than Joe Biden, she didn't do and present what we need for black power. And so I am a black power organizer. I'm born in the seventies in Oakland, California, right? I'm for my people, and I've been trained to be for my people. And when you have someone who is telling these young people, and I think it's really important to remember the moment that we're in, right? And I heard it said that we have to tell people to get up. Our young people were already up. Our young people were putting everything on the line. I'm the mother of a twenty-year-old, an eighteen-year-old, and a fourteen-year-old. My twenty-year-old is co-founder of Students for Justice in Palestine at Howard University. They put everything on the line, everything on the line, camped out for months at a time. You got black folks in neighborhoods, Sister Robin, you know this, putting everything on the line to say, "We demand the debt that we're owed reparations now and the kind of reparations that comes with a check." People putting everything on the line, and what happens is someone is trotted out who's there to really quell protest. But what we need and what pulled me into this presidential race, and I'm someone who said I would never, ever, ever, ever run for office, because one of the other reasons that Dr. Malvo is who I want to be when I grow up, is I'm gonna tell on you a little bit, Dr. Malvo, is I said I would never run for office, because I like to cuss a lot. I like to stand outside of a system that I understand has intentionally placed targets on our backs and loudly and proudly proclaim myself as an abolitionist. I am not here to tinker around the edges of fundamentally unjust systems. I'm here to tear them down and build something new. And so when Dr. West decided he was going to run for president on a platform of truth, justice, and love, when he said, "We're going to build policy pillars that say gender justice includes not just the right to have an abortion, but also an economic investment in women" that says, "We're going to provide resources, so if you want to give birth, this society is obligated to take care of those children," right? That we're going to say that when we talk about economic justice, it's not an opportunity economy, it's a twenty-seven-dollar-an-hour federal minimum wage, it's reparations, it's a right to homeownership, it's all of these things. So that pulled me in, because I saw it as a moment in a movement, is what Dr. West said. And I saw it as an opportunity to use an electoral tool that bolsters a movement on the ground. Here's where I'll close, because I saw the sign go up. Here's where I'll close, is that we have to refuse to be the good Negroes that try to quiet the rebels. We have to applaud the rebels. We have to say that it's the rebels among us who've always brought us to freedom. Y'all, young people who were on your college campuses, camped out and they done took your tents and kicked you out of school, we'll buy you some new tents, because we got jobs, right? Y'all who are ready to say the Democrats are going to pay, because in California... Y'all who are ready to say the Democrats are gonna pay because in California they betrayed black community by pulling their own reparations bill, we have to say, you're right, and we are gonna take the bus up with you, and we're not gonna primary the Democrats in the same way that AIPAC did. We gonna primary you from community and elect rebels to hold those spaces. And so we have to remember that no oppressed people, although voting is a really important tool, no oppressed people have simply voted themselves into freedom. How we move into freedom is voting and organizing. Voting and organizing. Reverend Hagler, thank you. We must vote and we organize, we use every single tool in our toolbox. We voted last week, this week, and every day forward, we organize, we organize, we organize, and we build for black power and the world that we all want, need, and deserve.
So Melanie Campbell, you've been at this a long time. I remember Operation Big Vote from back in the day, you know, organizing black folks to get the vote together to exercise power. I don't know whether it was colored power, black power, whatever kind of power, but I think you've been working on a power agenda as well. What is your assessment? And how do you see this outcome? And let me just say something that, because we can move things around a little bit. When I went, came to the reception for Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, I was itching to talk to you, because, you know, y'all don't pay me no mind. I sent you an email, I said, you know, y'all don't pay me no mind. I want to talk to Melanie. I said, Melanie, I said, have you received any resources, significant resources from the Democratic Party? And I think you told me, I ain't got much, or something along those lines. The reason I raised that was the question of, you know, I mean, some of these issues that are being raised. If we want to organize and galvanize the black vote, why is it that the black, why is it the Democratic Party? And then I ran into Derrick Johnson at the airport a couple of days. He said, I was throwing F-bombs at the Democratic Party for two weeks. Think I had a conversation with you, President Mariel. So I'm saying, it'd be interesting to get your assessment of breaking your back and working hard, and people like Latasha Brown, I understand that sometimes she got to get private money and all those kinds of things, trying to move an agenda forward. You had the floor.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Daniels, you always have this setup for us to come together. Before I answer that question, I do want to say this. I'm mad as hell. I am in a space that a lot of the black women I know feel like this country spit in our I want to thank brothers who stood in the gap, because part of what happened was an attempt, part of what I feel happened was happening as we were going through this election, was there was a setup on who to blame, and a lot of us were talking about that. And there was a setup to make sure black men were gonna be the fall guy on the ultimate outcome. Because I went to seven states in 24 days, and a lot of us did, and being on the ground in West Philly, and being down in Greenville from a West Philly to a Greenville, Alabama, is off the grid, if you, right? And understanding where our people were, we weren't divided as a people. Now, we have different viewpoints of the politics, but we understood that this was not a normal election. This is a realignment of this structure. It is also a regime that now will sit at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, a leader of a regime, not an administration. And so part of the reality, and if you allow me just to share my feelings, that I feel I'm sharing from others that have shared with me, is that we knew where white women And when they start talking about white women for Kamala, white dudes for Kamala, I said, since I'm a my sister, we gonna believe that, right? I allowed myself to hope against hope that somehow we would be, quote unquote, aligned. But understanding, coming from Mims, Florida, where y'all, where I come from, right? Harry and Harry T. Moore country, understanding that what you said, my sister, was right on time, there is a whole different thing happening. It is about white supremacy. It is about white folks being at the top. And no matter what, no matter who ran, I don't think they would have, even if Joe Biden didn't do what he did, and he was not, didn't do what, I don't think they would have voted for him either, because of some of the things he was attempting to do. The nerve to say you even had racial equity in your conversation was a problem. And so we're in this moment where if we don't come together, our children won't have a shot. And so I don't care what ideology, what theology, what's and ever, if we don't come together in this moment. Because I was in a conversation in my office, and we have young people who are distraught, distraught about where their future lies, who are concerned that there will be this unfettered opportunity to kill them on the, just on a dime. I had my 18-year-old niece, 4 o'clock AM, and she's on the spectrum, call me crying 4 o'clock in the morning on that Wednesday, to say to me, Auntie, I don't have a passport. Because she heard us joking about, if we have a pass, Lord, I gotta give a passport, gotta get the hell out of here if this happens, right? I hear, I see the one minute, but I've been patient, I'm gonna, give me two. That she felt she didn't have a passport to get out of this country. What am I gonna do, Auntie? Right? She may be on the spectrum, but she was paying attention to what adults were saying. So we're in this moment that we're gonna have to get in a room and roll up our sleeves like our predecessors did, even if they always agreed. When I came here, I've been here, Julianne, 30 years now, come next month. And although it wasn't perfect, we got more of us in a room, and we organized Ron Daniels, Ron Walters, Dr. Height, all of them, and found a way with no cameras, what was said earlier, right? If we don't do that, y'all, right? It's not gonna take long. But if I'm gonna leave something positive to say and to affirm, I believe that sometimes in, when it's the darkest, and it is the darkest, that we will rise, but we won't rise unless we get in a room and we put aside whatever it is that keeps us from organizing ourselves. Me and Mark and some of us, we organize ourselves, but it's gotta be more of us with Black Lives Matter and this and that and the Working Party, like really get in some rooms and spend some time organizing for this fight, for it is about our survival. We can't get to thriving if we don't survive this situation we find ourselves in. So I'm excited about this moment, because you actually have pulled together a very diverse group of us who have probably never sat in a room really yet together, more than what we're doing right now. And so will we do that after tonight? And I pray, I pray we will, because we ain't, you know, we ain't scared to do what we gotta do. And so I'm ready.
It's Melanie Campbell. Dr. Jade, Dr. Jade, Dr. Jade, what's on your mind? Lord have mercy, Dr. Julianne Malvo, what is on your mind?
Well, let me tell y'all something. I ain't mad. I ain't even slightly, I was mad at the rhetoric, the hatefulness, somebody talking about her pimp. I mean, there were times in the middle of it that I could have gone to the TV and knocked a you-know-what out of somebody. But I ain't mad about outcome. I prayed for a positive outcome. I wanted a positive outcome. You know, Kamala and I go back to San Francisco days, I remember when she first started running. So I was proud of her, I was happy at the way she kept her dignity, despite all that. Because those of you who know me, they had to call me one hooker, and they would learn what hookers do to fools, you know? No, hookers are about to out of you. Oh, the grandpa is gone, so I can say anything, huh? Just kidding. But in any case, she exuded dignity, joy, at a time when people have all kinds of tropes about black women, angry black women, evil black women, there was none of that in her. But I ain't mad, because we've been down this road before. What I am doing is laser-like, looking at our so-called allies, looking at those, you know, I was in California for two years, dean of the College of Ethnic Studies, and it cracked me up how some of my brown brothers and sisters, I like to say black and brown, like it's all one word, black and brown, black and brown. But then when you look at the numbers, and I'm looking for the numbers, when you look at the numbers, what you find is that our Latina brothers and sisters did not really break with us. The older they were, the older they were, the more likely they were to break with us. Younger ones were not. We look at some of the, and the trope that black men, it all held on black men. Well, that man, my general manager is here, we had a chat, I'm not supposed to say orange man, they have to edit it out if I do. Could I call him Mango Mussolini? Can I call him Mango Mussolini? Oh, yeah, well, we trying to replay this on our air, so, well, you can edit that part out. But in any case, they kept trying to say that black men were the ones. He got 21% of the black male vote. That was not the majority, but that was his target. How did he get that vote? By playing to patriarchal stereotypes that some black men buy into. And why do black men buy into patriarchal stereotypes? Because they grew up in a patriarchy. Because this is a patriarchal country. Racist, sexist, predatory capitalists, those are the organizing principles of this country. Enslavement was an economic proposition. And we could go, everything, we did enormously well for a minute. Post-Reconstruction, you go 1866 to about 1910, we began to lose it in 1900. But you saw, progress, land acquisition, we had, they called, W. B. Duane called it land hunger. And black folks would do anything to get land, till they start taking it from us. And they just started taking it from us. And there were no laws, they just decided. There was a man in Paris, Texas in 1896, there were two of them, and they both owned a nice sizable piece of land. The younger one, they told him to sign his, they told him to sign his land over. WTF. I mean, told, and he said no, so they lynched him. Then they lynched the older guy who was in his 60s, and then the journalist said, we didn't have to lynch him, he was old, he's getting ready to die anyway. And they wrote that down. They wrote that down. And so systematically, and many of us who have roots in the South have stories of stuff that disappeared. In my family, we have the story of the moving fence. They went to bed one night, they wonder if the fence had moved, because we had a fish-rich bio that ran through our land. And we let everybody fish in it, white folks, black folks, whomever, but they didn't want us, the Hawkins, to have it. So they took it. And two of my cousins disappeared. And everybody says, we don't know what happened to them. One of them, he was very light, they claimed he ran off with a white woman. I'm like, no, he wasn't gonna leave his mama like that, not without a note. I mean, he might have left her, but not without a note. But in any case, we all have these stories. And so we, you know, if we have lived black history, which we, which most of us have, now let me say, those of us who want to sugarcoat stuff are intellectually deficient. What's the word that Dyson used? Afrodisia? Because we're not telling our young people these stories. In fact, some of us, I was told once, it was disturbing, disturbing for me to talk about that. I was talking about lynching, of course, those of you who know me know I'm doing some work on lynching. And this woman said, well, don't talk about that around my children, it'll hurt their feelings. I said, the rope will hurt them more. If they don't know that there's a possibility of a rope, they need to understand where we live. And so I, like I said, I'm not angry, I'm activated. You know, in fact, it's recommitted me to do a number of things. You know, I just told Siobhan, I said, I'm gonna have to get back with you. I have disengaged from a number of organizations, because I too busy. But that's no excuse. It's really no excuse, so you'll be hearing from me too, Melanie. You know, we have to do the work. I mean, it's there. We can't give up. But I just want to say a couple of things about, we all, everybody read At Project 2025. I don't think everybody read the whole thing, 900 and some pages of garbage.
Rubbish.
But what we must know is, first of all, they are attempting to remove any protective barrier that we had. So they're going after EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, the future of our planet, you know, the future of our planet. They're gonna go after the National Labor Relations Board. This is where our unionized brothers and sisters get protection. They want to go after the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, which prevents credit card companies and others from exploiting us. I mean, I could go down the list, but the point is, any protections that were there is what they're going after. I just got this text from a friend of mine who's a lawyer, that man is putting two of his lawyers, two fraudulent lawyers, one to be the deputy attorney general, and the other one to be something else at the Department of Justice. I mean, he's systematically, but see, Dr. Maya used to always say, when people tell you who they are, believe them. So I had all these, not all these, because I don't associate with people like that on the regular, but I had, you know, some so-called right-minded white people. So, well, you know, that's just his rhetoric. He's not going to do that, you know? You know, okay, so now you wanted it, you got it. And some of these white women who said they cared about reproductive, you can't build a whole campaign around reproductive freedom. The other stuff, these women are the mothers, daughters, sisters, and wives of white male oligarchs. They sleep with them. I mean, they sleep with them. I'm not saying that knowledge is transmitted congenitally, but I'm suggesting that there's a lot of information that is explained, exchanged. And so, you know, the education, the economic piece, this man would say, I'm not gonna tax tips, but he's gonna prevent overtime accumulation. So you're gonna need more tips. You know, you're gonna need a lot more tips.
You gotta get rid of the tipped wage.
There you go, with $2 and some cents, yeah. So then the next thing we would, I would want to look at very briefly, I know Dr. D. is gonna pull the string on me.
Yeah, we got, we do have four more, three more people, so we want to get to them.
I am very cognizant, my brother. With education, one of the things that we're forgetting is a number of African-American women in particular who are concentrated in the educational sector. We're forgetting about that. There are disproportionate number of us there, as well as in federal government. We represent almost 20% of federal workers. When he says he wants to get rid of federal workers, just walk down the street, DC, you cannot walk too far without touching a federal employee. You had lunch with one sometime this week. They're not gonna be able to pay, you have to buy their lunch next time, because they're about to get D. six. So the whole education piece is problematic for any number of reasons, including what it will do to cities and states. So we're also not really looking at the intergovernmental pieces of this, and how many cities and states rely on the feds for part of their lifeblood. And so we're, you know, we want to go, see, I don't care, I mean, I do care, but the fact that Trump is a nasty, foul, filthy, no home training idiot who called anybody out of their name, that's just who he is. He been that way all his life. What I care about is the structural things he's attacking, and that's what's making me, so, yeah, call somebody out of their name, all right, I mean, I will call you out of your name back. It ain't that deep. But we have to look at the issue of structure. And so let me say this last quick thing, white voter participation went way up. Now, white voter participation went up. Kamala Harris was the most effective GOTV instrument that white America had. Both of y'all said, people would not, could not vote for a black person, could not vote for a black woman, but they might have stayed home if it was Biden. But Kamala, so it just stuck in their craw, we can't do this. So it was not about the economy. These people say, oh, it was, it was not the These people say, oh, it was, it was, it was not the economy. The economy is doing much better. It is about essentially racism. Just cut it down, and, and, and you cannot make chicken salad out of chicken spit. So let's not put it, I didn't mean spit. So let's not put all this embellishments around it. It's racism, pure and simple.
All right, thank you much. Now, let me, let me, let's, we, 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 we have four more people to go. Let me just say this, though. In nine, in the 2020 election, 80 million Americans did not vote. There were 10 million less who did not vote in this election. And I, and I, and the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, voting ain't the end-all and be-all, but those who do register and do vote will exercise disproportionate power. And that's one of the things. So I just want to say, you know, I don't know what more people, no, that 10 million less voted this time. George Fraser, I know you have an itch, so you got, uh-oh. George Fraser, you, you president of Fraser Nation and all that good stuff? You had the floor.
Dr. D, real quickly, white people did that, some of them stayed home, but they increased their share of the vote.
I got that, but I'm just saying, and as I, I'm telling, I'm making that for a reason, I'm making that for a point because, um, and I'll say that in my comments at the end, because I have something to say specifically about the George Fraser.
At first, I think it's important for me to make something clear, considering what we're talking about. Yes, I am black, in case you were not entirely sure. That's the beauty of our culture and race, becoming all shape sizes, skin tones, and hair textures. Lots of options. The second thing I want to do is, I keep this close to me. I'm 80 years old. God is good. Born on the mean streets of Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, New York. I said Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, New York. And they say, when you're from Bed-Stuy, you're either a thug or a gangster. I'm a gangster. You're going to find out in a minute. It was 1962, and I was running the streets of Harlem. I was 17 years old. It was on 125th Street and Lenox Avenue, right down from the Apollo. And it was a young man on the street corner on a soapbox giving a talk. It wasn't Malcolm. I didn't really recognize the young man. So I walked over because he gathered a crowd. And it turned out to be Stokely Carmichael, who later changed his name to Kwame Toure, married the beautiful Miriam Makeba, and moved to Africa, South Africa. But he said on that street corner, and I have the exact quotes because I don't remember the entire quote by heart, said something that changed the entire trajectory of my life. And this is why I keep this quote in my pocket every single day. And I read it probably three or four times a week to remind me. So I'm going to read it to you as I heard it from Stokely Carmichael in 1962 at 17 years old. He said, "No black person in this country, no black person in this country makes any advancement solely based on his or her talent or worth. All individual advancement is based on mass struggle. We make no progress in this world without shedding our blood. Therefore, your advancement and success does not belong to you. It belongs to the people. And if you do not use your success or advancement for the benefit of your people, it is a betrayal of the people who shed their blood for you."
That's right.
Amen, Stokely Carmichael. So let me say the next few things and still be loved. Ain't nobody saving black people but black people. It's been 400 years, and our black asses ain't saved. Who in the hell are we waiting for? We're waiting for us. And we know that old keys will not open new doors. Here's some statistics for you. There are 8 billion people in the entire world. Only 17% of those people are white. 83% are melanated people dominated by people of African descent and one and a half billion Chinese Asians and East Indians. So what's the point, Dr. Fraser? We are not outnumbered, we are outorganized. That has been said a million different ways on this incredible platform. We are suffering from cognitive bias versus critical thinking. Right? Critical thinking produces what? Facts. And the reason facts don't change most people's opinions is because most people's opinions don't use facts but to form their opinions. They use their opinions to inform their facts. So we have to straighten that out. That's number three. Number four. Now, I want to say this and still be loved. We're missing something that is crumbling our culture. It seems to be an invisible problem. But it needs to be brought to the forefront. I'll preface what this thing is by saying this to you. There is no culture in the history of humankind that, that has ever risen to maximize their full human potential without family at the center of that culture. It is impossible to do. What does that mean, Dr. Fraser? It means that at this moment in time, in case no one told you, the black family is in an existential crisis. How do I know this? When I was growing up, the marriage rate in our culture was 85%. Today, it is 34%. Projected within the next 20 years from now, if we don't fix it, we'll be in the low teens. 71% of our women are not married. 29% will never get married. 63% of our brothers are not married. 33% of them will never get married. How does marriage affect the economic base of a culture? The facts are very clear. Look it up yourself. Household median wealth, household median income by cultural group. Now, for 350 years, who do you think had the highest household median wealth and income? White people. For 350 years, it was white people. It is no longer white people. Number one are East Indians. Household median wealth, $129,000. What is the marriage rate in the East Indian culture? Second are Chinese Asians. Household median income, $109,000 a year. What is the marriage rate? 70%. Third are white people. Household median income, $88,000. What is the marriage rate among white people today? 57%. Fourth are Latinos or Hispanics. Household median income, $88,000 a year. Marriage rate, over 70%. We are at the bottom. Household median income, $55,000 a year. What is the marriage rate? So it impacts the intergenerational transfer of wealth. Because you can see from those statistics, other cultural groups have two working on income. We, generally speaking, have one. We must fix this. We must bring attention to this. This is easy to say, this is very difficult to do. Very difficult to do. So what am I saying to you? I'm saying to you, there will be obstacles to this. Major obstacles. If you understand our history, you do the, you know, the first job of white folks was to destroy black men. Yes, that was the first job. The second job now is to destroy black families. We cannot allow this to happen. This is foundational to every single thing that we are talking about. My favorite quote outside of the Bible, and I'm finished with this. My favorite quote outside is the Bible is a quote by Marcus Aurelius. Marcus Aurelius was one of the five great Caesars. And here's what Marcus Aurelius said in 600 B.C. He said that "the impediment to action advances the action. What stands in your way becomes the way." In other words, the obstacle is the way. Where there are no obstacles, there is no way. What is the first thing God does when he gives you an assignment that he feels that you are prepared for? He puts an obstacle in your way. And your job is to find a way over, round through, and under the obstacle strip, fall, make mistakes, and learn the lessons, and apply those lessons to the next obstacle. And when you get that obstacle, right, what is God, or that lesson assignment, God puts another obstacle in your way. And when you look back over your life, that is the story of all of our lives, overcoming obstacles. You can, you imagine what our forefathers and ancestors had to do for us to be sitting here, the obstacles they had to overcome? Well, resolving the issue of black male female toxicity, and thus, the destruction of the black family is a massive obstacle that we must be conscious of, and we must attack. Now, in order to attack it, you must first understand that it is a problem. But we're not talking about this as a problem. It is a huge problem and has a domino effect. Finally, some inspiration. The New England Journal of Medicine, the first medical journal in America, one of the great medical journals in the world. Five years ago, Google it, did a longitudinal study, a massive national study, on the three most productive periods of our life. The three most productive periods of our life. Number three is between 50 and 60. Number two, between 70 and 80. And number one, between 60 and 70. Now, what does that mean? That means God, God has designed us in such a way that from zero to 49, you ain't done shit yet. That your best work, your best work is for the final 30 years of your life. Take advantage of these final 30 years for those of you that are in that category, and know that there are obstacles, but there is a way. Know that you are the way. There is no other way, other than with and through you. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
So Robin, Robin Lou Simmons, there was a reference made today. The orange man, AKA Asian orange, said that he was going to award reparations to aggrieved, discriminated against white people, that white people were going to get reparations. So talk to me about the state of reparations, and how this election may or may not impact reparations, and, and, and your sense of what has happened and the road forward.
Absolutely. Dr. Daniels, thank you. I'm so grateful to be on this panel with each of you. Many of you, my teachers, my inspiration. Just thank you. And, and thank you, Dr. Daniels, for all that you have done for black people globally. Really, thank you. Um, yeah, so I heard that. And the state of the reparations movement is, is really in momentum. Just today, we heard the great news out of Palm Springs, California, that our dear sister, Ariva Martin, led the community to a settlement of reparations for the egregious acts of housing in Palm Springs. Tulsa, Oklahoma, the city, by executive order, recently passed a reparations task force and a resolution to begin the work. Evanston, Illinois, five years ago this month, passed the nation's first tax-funded reparations legislation, and has begun dispersing direct benefits, and has dispersed just under $6 million, and there's more to come. There are over 100 localities that have begun a path towards reparations for the crimes against black people and the legacies of the institution of slavery. And so we have been feeling good about our local-to-national efforts. One thing that I could say, there's so much that has been said, but I have to say this, that we were so close to, closer than I understand ever historically, having the amount of House cosponsors for HR40, a Senate companion bill, and did not have the support to have a floor vote. But I believe that the answer to our current conditions right now, it's been said, is we have to unite. We have to unite as people. We have to become politically educated to understand what is possible, to understand the power of our vote, the power of our economics. We have to understand solidarity economics and conscious consumerism, and all of these things we must understand. Because we are missing opportunities. And I could speak to my experience going into cities to support localities to begin a road to repair, and ask simple questions like, what form of government? Is it a strong mayor? Who is your city councilperson? Even understanding the legislative process, these are things that we have to understand through political education. And so we need to unite as people. We are separated by class and politics and all of these different things. And we don't have the luxury of being divided as a people. So I'm hoping that we do move forward more united. And right now, with the current trifecta in Congress and the president-elect, the reparations movement is challenged. And I wish I was coming with more hope, but I'll tell you this. Even before the outcomes of the election, we have already legal challenges, lawsuits against reparations efforts that we all know about. But there's also legislative opposition against reparations, which includes a House bill that was introduced last summer by a Texas congressman, an anti-reparations bill. And we were feeling okay, there were very few cosponsors for that. But now with this current administration, the likelihood of that changing and stalling and stopping and putting real barriers to the great milestones that we've made locally is a real threat. And so my hope is that we sober up, unite, become politically educated, and understand how we move forward so that we don't lose all of the gains that we've made in the last five years in the reparations movement. We have countless cities, many of them will be convening in the next couple of weeks in Evanston. We have a symposium, you all are welcome to attend. A town hall that is presented by the National African-American Reparations Commission. You could stream that virtually. But we have a lot of strategizing to do. And we must unite as a people. Even within the reparations movement, there is division against what forms of reparations, and who is eligible, and who should be leading, and this sort of thing. We need to unite as a people just around reparations. We need to unite as a people just around reparations, calling the question and not getting in front of ourselves with arguing and debating before we can even get consensus on a path forward for reparations. And so, Dr. Daniels, you know, this is the work that you do every day. You convene NARC, the National African American Reparations Commission. If you're not familiar with the commission, please do learn more about it. There is incredible comms. You'll stay updated on all of the great milestones that have been moving forward and as we continue to strategize on what our path forward is. But it is, it's, we're concerned. And I, I just wish I had more answers right now, but, you know, we're all just taking it in and coming up with strategy on how we move forward.
Well, thank you, Robin. And I neglected to say, so people understand, that Evanston was a model. And it was Robin Ruth Simmons who had the guts, the courage, and the vision to put forth the first reparations initiative. Let's give a big hand to Robin Ruth Simmons.
Thank you.
Now, to our Secretary of State, Mel Fudd. Mel Fudd is our honorary Secretary of State. And I saved him not because I want to not have less time, but because Africa and all of that is a very important question. And our Godfather over here knows legislative policy more than anybody else. So these last two speakers are very, very important. So, and I hope people are being patient. I know it's been long, but I hope it's been substantive. I hope that people are hearing and learning and whatever. And there, there's, you know, we, we got to talk about operational unities. Not all of the views are in agreement, and they don't have to be. They don't have to be. We just have to have what I call principled unity, right? In terms of, the tent has to be sort of cast in a certain way, because, you know, there's some folk who, no matter what you say, ain't gonna be in the tent, because they are deliberately, you know, as somebody said, they may be cosmetically black, but they ain't authentically black. So we have to be careful about that. But, but to our Secretary of State, I mean, we have somebody who has now been elected who called Haiti and various other places asshole countries. And by the way, we're gonna ask people to be patient, because I have someone standing by for a short update on Haiti before you leave. So just please be patient. Where are we now in relationship to what's gonna happen with Africa and the Caribbean? And, you know, you spoke of this on Africa, but you're, you're tentacles in terms, you meet with all of the ambassadors and so forth. What's on the horizon?
Thank you very much, Ron. I'm enjoying this evening. There's a lot of food for thought here. So I really appreciate all the previous panelists. First, I want to, if I got, let me do. Um, I want to acknowledge Ambassador Elsie Kanza from Tanzania. Will you stand, please? I want to encourage you guys to get to know her. We might have to get on a plane. She could help, she could be helpful, okay? It's great to be here. On the Africa front, we're challenged, no doubt about it. As you indicated, President Trump called an African country when they said, you know, they're the worst part of the human anatomy. That's what he said, you know? I'm also paying attention to some of the people. He's putting a job to Rubio as a Secretary of State. So Cuba got to be crying, South Africa got to be crying. You know, and then others, he, he talked about the Health and Human Services. He got Bobby Kennedy as his pick for Health and Human Services, who don't believe in vaccines. So, you know, we get, we get a global pandemic about every four years. There was AIDS, there was Ebola, you know, it was COVID. And you could have bet your bottom dollar, we're gonna get one within the next two or three years. What is this Health and Human Service gonna say about health in Africa? My bet is he gonna say, let them die. Yeah, let them die. So when it comes to Africa, we talked about 2025, the paper. This thing has been in play for the last 20 or 30 years and not longer. And that's why organizations like Africare is gone, TransAfrica is gone, Leon Sullivan's outfit, gone. All of the Africa-focused organizations are gone. They're dead and buried. You think it was an accident, you know? Now, also, I look at how do we communicate with one another? You know, I used to, every once a week, I would get my Jet magazine. And I knew where Ron Daniels was running. I knew where Jesse Jackson was. You know, I, we can't communicate. Emergent magazine is gone, you know? And now, we talk about, I get it on social media. Anybody can say anything at any time on social media. I do it all the time. I say what I want to say. So we're, 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 we're in a real fix. I think the strategy going forward is to take the black community apart. Right now, we're being pitted against African immigrants in this country, left and right. I see it every day. And they tell it to African immigrants, you guys just be nice and live out in the suburbs, and everything will be okay, but stay away from them black Americans, you know? And so, we're being pitted against our own people, you know? I was told on a, on a TV show last week, a guy, a Nigerian, told me, he was my co-host on this show that broadcast back to Nigeria, and he said, you're not an African? Just gonna say, you know, if I'm not an African, what am I? You know, you are American or something. I mean, I'm saying, it, it's getting really wild out there. I, I think, you know, my mother, when I grew up, she always said, don't agonize, organize. And I've always taken that to heart. We're already pulling the Africa-focused community together. We had a meeting last week, we got one on the 22nd, where we actually bringing the coalitions together to actually see what we might be able to do strategically going forward. We gotta bring the next generation along, you know, no doubt about it. A lot of the ones, when I was looking at this, I said, where is Dick Gregory? You know, where is Dick Gregory? Gone, you know? Where is Leon Sullivan? Gone. And so, where is John Lewis? Gone. We gotta, we gotta step up, no doubt about it. Call, count on me to be a partner in this organizing effort. You know, and I'm, I'm great at being a lieutenant. I don't have to be the general. That's the secret to my success. I don't have to be in charge. I like to be working, in fact, I like to work from behind. But the Africa-focused community, the last thing I want to say is, most Americans, including African Americans, are uneducated, undereducated, and miseducated about Africa, period, you know? Part of it is to blame the media. You know, when I went to Africa 50 years ago, I started my career 50 years ago. And when I first went to Africa, really, I thought Tarzan would be at the airport, you know? You know, because what, what did we know about Africa, period? And it hasn't changed much since. And so, we, we need to go back to the Saturday schools. We gotta do all kinds of things to bring our people up to stuff. Because if we're not informed and educated about Africa, I'm not sure what is the, the future of us as, as, as an African people. So thank you very much, Ron, for this opportunity. I'm, I'm grateful for being here. I'm looking forward to follow up.
All right, very good. Now, last but not least, because obviously, there's not gonna be a second round after you all just blew through this. So there's not gonna be a second round, we're near a conclusion. But intentionality, because see, the important thing is to look at the different organizations and how the organizations work. We got a lot of work to do around this question. The NAACP, a lot of people despise the NAACP. I have my criticism of the NAACP occasionally and so forth. I'm a lifetime member of the NAACP because I grew up in the NAACP. It is, well, they say the largest and baddest organization on the planet. And one of the things that they do, a lot of people don't recognize, is they monitor policy. What is the threat? What's going on? How are we going to get our policies through and inch our agenda through? And one of the people who has been on that case for a long, long time, I call him the Godfather, you know, he's got that beautiful gray hair and all that stuff, is one Hillary Shelton. Hillary Shelton, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Daniels, and thank you, everyone. Quite frankly, when Dr. Daniels told me he wanted to have a get-together about a year ago, as a matter of fact, when he said that about a year ago, I was going, well, that'll be right after the election, won't it? And he said, yeah? And I said, well, what if we don't get what we want in the election? He said, well, we probably really do need to meet then. Either way, we were going to have to talk. So very well, having us get together here, and quite frankly, I take it personally because so many of my heroes and sheros are here. When, when you gave Dr. Mary Frances Berry that award, I can tell you a story about my hearing her speak for the first time when I was a college student. Tell you how long ago it was, as a matter of fact. She spoke at what used to be called the Howard Inn Hotel, right there on Howard's campus.
Pahrumpi Hotel.
Back in the day, running the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, fighting Ronald Reagan, and as you said, handing over the information she had to hand over to the person that Reagan put in place to replace her because she was doing such a fabulous job. Seeing her does great things for my heart. Because I know those who have been in the movement and the struggle for as long as she has. It's been just incredible, incredible for me. So I was grateful there. I'm sorry that Mark had to leave, and Mark is also one of my heroes. Because the National Urban League does the assessment every year. They tell us where we went on economic issues, housing, where we went on education issues. And with that information, hopefully, we're going to be able to figure out what to do. Because what's number one on this president's list is eliminating the Department of Education, the major national tool that we have utilized to be able to make sure that our children get a high-quality education regardless of where they are. And then Washington, D.C., one thing, then Biloxi, Mississippi, we're gonna make sure the standards are there. And some of the brightest, sharpest people I know, even the sister right now, who is the undersecretary for civil rights at the Department of Education, Catherine Layman, is still doing what she needs to do to make sure this stuff works out the way it needs to work out. We're grateful for that and grateful that Mark laid down that foundation before we had that conversation. Now Reverend Hagler is sitting straight across from me. And the reason I love that brother is because he made, he kept me straight from day one that I entered this struggle, as a matter of fact. He had just been sent from, I believe it was Boston, to come down to D.C. At the time that I was given a position, working for the United Methodist Church's General Board of Church and Society. Reverend Hagler looked at me, because he'd been in some other meetings and other places across the country with me. And he said, Brother Shelton, he said, first, you're tough as a bull. Secondly, you need to cool out, brother. And I appreciated that. He made it very clear, and he's run a wonderful church here and so forth. And so, when I look at all of my friends around here, those who have led the charge for voter registration, education, get out the vote, and make sure that every vote is counted, those who have educated and trained our young people, whether they're young women on college campuses or doing other things, you're here and just being able to take a minute after going through what we all just went through together, watching a sister who is one of my alumni. Yeah, I'm, I'm a Howardite as well. H-U? I know. So putting it in those terms as we prepare to leave here is extremely important. And nobody could have pulled us together the way that Dr. Daniels has pulled us together to have this conversation. Where our young people are, where your thoughts are in this struggle and this movement forward, I sat there and smiled and thought about how my thing has changed as much. And those who have been involved in the struggle for as long as he has, brother, I appreciate you. Laying out the issues, breaking it down, and making sure we can think about it in these terms and really look at the data and the statistics. I just want to close out in saying it this way. If we don't have a plan, we are not going to fail, but we are never going to succeed. If we don't have a plan as we leave here today, in other words, if we don't have the, the agenda, the bills, the laws to make it happen, for them to hold it to us. The reason we worked on H.R. 40 the way that we did is because we needed a plan. We needed a document that all of us had worked on and agreed on to move forward, to make sure that as we're talking about and moving forward on the issues of reparations, then people throwing out numbers all over the place, it's great we're gonna have a conversation, but a conversation and then cutting a deal is what we're going to have to do together. And believe it or not, we were able to move forward along those lines. Got more cosponsors on that bill than ever before. When we're leaving here, we're going to have to talk about the issues that are not comfortable issues, like the fact that our children's number one cause of death is gun violence. The number one cause of death for all children now is gun violence. But the number one cause for our children, and we've seen too many of that, is gun violence and it's continued to be. We've got to talk about that and make sure that no matter who we're gonna talk about winning the election, if they're not gonna talk about gun control, they're not speaking our language. If they're not going to talk about making sure that our economic conditions are in great shape and think about how the economy moves forward, then we blowing it. Because see, we actually wrote the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Bill. That's the bill that controls how the banks do business. But you remember back in the days when every time one of your checks bounced or whatnot, you got hit with the fee that was probably as high as the check, the amount of money you were writing on that check? You know why you don't have that anymore? Because of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Bill. And the agency that Donald Trump wants to destroy is an agency that was created by that piece of legislation. His primary responsibility is to enforce those provisions and make sure that black families are taken care of as well. So as we're thinking about what we walk out of here, we've got to talk about an issue. Most people wonder, well, in Washington, D.C., Brother Shelton, why are you talking to me about the death penalty in the United States? And the reason I'm talking about that is because it's very much here. And because the number one group of folks that they mistakenly execute after finding guilty, they execute them and then have a conversation about it later, happen to be African Americans. Number two are Native Americans. You know why? Because our federal government and the federal death penalty is utilized on Native American territory more than it is in states. The states do their own thing when it comes to that. But if the federal government isn't pleased with that, and something tells me, the man that's going to be moving to 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, he is not going to be pleased that the reason that we're saying that we want to end the death penalty is because they accidentally killed too many black people. So as we walk out of here, I'm feeling refreshed and refined and ready to go again. Because I know what it's like as we end up dealing with a Congress now that's led by somebody who I believe is out of his mind in the U.S. Senate. And the only person crazier than him is the guy that's running it for the U.S. House. But right now, you've got the same political party that's run by the highest-ranking member of that political party, who just happens to be the President of the United States, are all members of the same party. So in other words, when he tells them he wants his bill through, it's gonna go through, because they are scarder of him than they are of us. So let me leave it like this, as we think about what we have to move forward on. When we think about, the Congress is just coming back. It's time to visit with them now, even though we know they're only gonna be in for about another month. And then this Congress is going to end, and the new Congress is going to begin in January. Well, we can send the messages now to them, because a whole bunch of them are coming back. But there are a lot of them that won't be, but that's okay. We'll come visit with them in January as well. We want to make sure that they know that we know where they work. We want to make sure that they know that we know, quite frankly, where they live. Now, I'm not recommending anything that is illegal, Reverend. See, he gave me that look, and I appreciate that. I'm not recommending anything that's illegal. But we are talking about something that will be consistent. You can remove people from office quite legally. You can make sure they don't get to run again quite legally. You can even walk in front of their houses with a sign, if you want to, reminding them that you're the ones that made sure that they couldn't have that elected position anymore. We can still do that. The bottom line is this. Here we are, getting ready to start again. Here we are, knowing who the person is that went to the White House. We know who's running the House and the Senate. We know what their agenda is, and quite frankly, most of us can get to where they work on the subway. It's time for us to make sure that we come back to visit them on the subway. It's time to make sure that we make sure our message is very clear to them. I've seen many times, and I've seen how our folks can make a decision in all kinds of parts of the country. One of the slowest-moving states I know in terms of liberation advancement of African Americans has got to be the state of Indiana. I was just in Indiana this past weekend, because they just elected a new president of the NAACP for the whole state of Indiana. They just committed to add over 10% per year of new units, that is, membership units of the NAACP throughout Indiana. And quite frankly, so far, they've been able to hold it up and get it done. They're moving it forward because they're doing the hard work. And yes, like in so many other things... And yes, like in so many other things we do, I've heard conversations about men and about women. Let me be clear on some things about that, too. And what, I've been married to the same sister for over 30 years. She is a down-home southern girl from Georgia. She is brilliant and eloquent. She makes her message very clear and succinct. And I'll put it in these terms as well. I don't know a time that I've ever said I disagreed with her on anything. And quite frankly, it's because I'm still convinced this day, over 30 days, 30 years after, that she's still right on everything. So brothers and sisters, I'm fired up and ready to go. I'm fired up because we know what we can end up with if we're not careful, but we know what we can do when we want to. We know that we can elect an African-American man to do two terms in the White House and go to the White House to visit him and enjoy Prince performing in the middle of the White House. You know you've made it when he's the one signing the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Bill. When he's the one signing the healthcare bill to make sure that we all have greater access to healthcare insurance, he's the one that signed the changes that were actually added to so many of the things we've done. So as I finish, I'm convinced that as hard as it's been, we can win this. I'm convinced with my three sons, I've got three black boys, as a matter of fact, one's in Philly, one's in New York, and one's in Atlanta. And the reason that I am so po is because we paid to make sure that their tuition was taken care of all those places and whatnot. And when they come out, them some bad boys, and they're gonna do some incredible things. So with that, thank you so much. We've enjoyed what we've done today, and we enjoy, more importantly, the fun we're gonna have with what we do to change this country and the rest of the world to be everything it's supposed to be. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks to the Godfather. All right. Now, we want you to just be patient for a couple more minutes because we got to talk about the first black republic in the world, just for a couple of minutes. Because I contend that unless Haiti is free, we will never, ever, any of us be free. So we're just asking you to hold for a few minutes. I want to invite to the microphone Jocelyn McCullough, who is a senior policy advisor for the Haitian-American Foundation for Democracy, to tell us what is happening in Haiti and to give us our marching orders. Jocelyn McCullough, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Ron. It's really hard to follow all these presentations that have been brilliant, that have been substantive, that have inspired all of us, you know, to do more. I'm also especially thankful for Ron for providing me with the opportunity to say a few words about Haiti. But I'll go a little bit further. I want to go also into saying a few words about Haitians in America. Because to a certain extent, part of what has happened here that brought Mr. Trump to office is the fact that he signaled out Haitian immigrants, you know, for special vile treatment. And by doing that, he also communicated to the whole black family that this is what he's expecting to do to them. Now this said, let me go back to Haiti for a minute and say a couple of things. If you think you've had it bad, Haiti is even worse at this stage. I'll just say a few things. Currently, as I speak, the airport in the Haiti's capital, Port-au-Prince, is shut down. It's locked down. There are no flights coming in or coming out of the capital. The capital city of Haiti is home to about 3 million people. Most of them are living in fear, in fear of a situation that allowed criminal gangs, you know, to control vast amounts of the city, the city neighborhoods and so forth. So you have, you have a situation in which people are afraid for their lives, people, you know, women in particular, women and girls, are being exposed to extreme abuses, this has rape and so forth, under the terror of gangs, you know, who use weapons and essentially are in a situation where they are the law unto themselves. Seaports are also locked down. Cargo ships cannot come in to Haiti unimpeded without fearing that they are going to be attacked. Part of the reason why the airport is locked down, by the way, is because, you know, just Monday, the three flags, three U.S. flights, American Airlines, JetBlue, and Spirit Airlines, you know, when they landed in Haiti, they were shut out. And in fact, you know, the Spirit Airlines flight had one person who suffered some casualty. So that's why, you know, currently, what has happened, the FAA has banned flights, U.S. flights to Haiti for about 30 days. American Airlines has decided to suspend its flights for about three months. Now Haiti is governed by a transitional council that came into play in March. That transitional council was, to some extent, the result of a series of negotiations that were first held by Haitians among themselves. And then eventually, when the international community, which has always had a hand in Haitian politics, when they came in, you know, they messed it up so that they made it quite impossible for the Haitians themselves, you know, to get a grip on the situation. So what was billed as a Haitian solution, and some of the elements of that are part of the Haitian solution, became a Haitian crisis. Became a Haitian crisis in a way that made it impossible, nearly impossible, for the Haitians, you know, to really take control of the situation and essentially use the tools that they had in hand, including international support from Kenya, from the international community, so that they could regain control of government territory and return peace and tranquility to the people of Haiti. In this context, the international community is basically saying, "Listen, you know, all you got to do is get your act together, you know, put down your differences, don't worry about them, all you got to do is organize so you can have elections." Organize so you can have elections. But you can't have elections when people are not at peace, when people cannot have conversations, when people cannot participate in the process of holding the government accountable. You cannot do that. And therefore, the entire process is skewed. So you think you have it bad? Haitians have it worse. Now, this is, I said I was going to speak a little bit about the situation here. Part of, I'm gonna wrap it up, but you're gonna have to give me a couple of minutes here. You promised me seven minutes, and we're not even at two, right? So part of the reason why I want to say that is because I have a long history of activism in the United States. But my most important work was done as a director, as an activist associated with the National Coalition for Haitian Refugees. Part of the reason why I'm raising the National Coalition for Haitian Refugees because it was a coalition that was comprised of Haitian organizations and civil rights organizations and faith-based organizations and labor-based organization. The NAACP was one founding member of the National Coalition for Haitian Refugees. The National Urban League participated in it. The Southern Christian Leadership Conference was also represented on that. So we had a merging of a coalition, a grand coalition, that came together and said, "The kind of policies that were being meted out by the government at the time should not stand." Should not stand. And why did they do that? Why did the civil rights organizations agree and came on board? Is because they realized, and people like Ben Hooks and Vernon Jordan and so forth, realize that if they can do it to the Haitians, they will do it to you. They will roll back as much as possible and as fast as possible the gains that have been made through the civil rights movement. That's what the Haitian issue was. And now we're back to a situation where, in the throes of this campaign, this campaign, Mr. Trump decided, you know, to single out the Haitians. His vice presidential partner did the same thing, and they went all around the United States doing that. What we need today, frankly, because, I mean, I was part of a Zoom call last night, it was a very small Zoom call, primarily being carried out by African-American women. They didn't know who I was, but I was invited by somebody else, and I kept quiet because I wanted to listen to the conversation. And one of the, and most of the people on that call were about my age, your age, my age, Ron's age. And one of them said something significant, which I wanted to communicate. He says that, you know, "We can speak to each other all we want, but if we do not get the young people, you know, to take part, to realize that it is in their own best interest today to invest their time and effort into understanding the situation, into understanding the implication of this vote that has been held now, into understanding that they need to tell their friends, their relatives, their sisters, their brothers, their cousins, that this is a new phenomenon, but a phenomenon that seeks to roll back dozens of years of progress. We are not going to do much more than talk to each other and reminisce about the good old days." So my message to you, as we go along and as I add my interest and so forth, would you respect to the Haitian issue? We, all of us, you, the NAACP, the Black Lives Matter and so forth, we need to sit down, strategize. We need to develop a plan of action. Together with Ron, and we've had several sessions, you know, we call it the Crisis Group Meetings. I hope that the Crisis Group Meetings that we've had, you know, are going to be much bigger, but in addition to the Crisis Group Meetings that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, what we need to do is really have a plan which merges Haitian-American vitality with African-American vitality and fortitude so that we can move forward. That's the way to go, and that's my appeal to you today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jocelyn McCullough. Well, first of all, would you give this panel a great round of applause? This is brilliant brain trust that we pulled together. And would you give yourself a big round of applause for your patience in being here tonight? Now, what happens very often at these meetings is everybody else talks, then the president don't get a chance to say nothing. But I have something to say tonight, so that's why I was trying to move people along. There's supposed to be a second round. There were some issues we wanted to take on with the audience, but you get a chance to do that because there was a coup and a rebellion that took place, and I wasn't able to get y'all to talk a little shorter, but that's fine. You got a lot of brilliance. You got a nunciate. But I want you to listen for a few minutes because we're about to leave. I hope that there were some other issues we might interchange ideas about. The issue of what's happening with Black Ben. What is that all about? The issue about the Democratic Party and its refusal to invest in black people the way it ought to. And let me just say this, black people are the base of the Democratic Party. Black people are the base of the Democratic Party. And so how is it till you walk away from the base of the Democratic Party? Now, I could talk more about that because, you know, I mean, one of the things that's important is a whole lot of white folks do not vote in this country either. The reality is what happened with Trump and the MAGA movement is he took those low-intensity voters who were on the sidelines. This is not the same Republican Party that we have known. He went, touched them, and took their grievances and took over that party. That's why he never, ever worried about his approval ratings, because he was doubling down on his base. What we do is, and it was okay to reach out to Liz Cheney and those folks and so forth to try to get that little sliver, but I wrote a piece called Kamala to the Hood. Because what I was trying to say was, you need to get into those bombed-out, I mean, we have sections of America that look like bombed-out war zones where nobody is going to test those brothers and sisters at all. And we're not going to succeed until we mobilize and organize them by various means and tools. I'd hope we'd be able to go to the audience and ask James Early, "What does this mean in terms of Cuba and this insane irrational boycott that has been suffering, like that's been suffocating Cuba for all these many years, or what's happening in Venezuela and various other places?" But we didn't get a chance to talk about that. I really also wanted to talk about how this orange man was trashing trans people, over and over again, trashing trans people as a way of transferring wealth to the wealthiest people in this country. That's what he was doing. I mean, over and over again, we have to have a conversation in our community. What do we feel about that? Because I suspect that some people say, "Well, I don't know about that, how they behave themselves and that lifestyle." And some people maybe haven't even got over the issue of support for LGBTQI rights as well. We got to have those conversations inside of our house. And I've said over and over again that with Black Lives Matter, to me, the most powerful thing that happened was, it finally said, "Yes, we're bringing Blackness back, but we're bringing Blackness back for everybody." No more people in the closet. All that genius that's been pinned up in our society all those years with us, "Don't ask and don't tell." You know, I mean, like, we were ostracizing James Baldwin, Audrey Lord. Brother Sekou, brother once said, "I'd rather have a gay Bayou Ruston than a straight trans Thomas anytime." Anytime. So we have to have those conversations. So I want to, I just want to quickly, quickly, quickly just talk about some actions. Some actions. And, you know, we got people who are part of the Big Eight now. Got the Big Eight, the Big Eight, so we, the Big Eight, and so I'm communicating with the Big Eight. But we used to have something called the Black Leadership Forum. The Black Leadership Forum was a configuration of all of the legacy organizations and other organizations that came together periodically. We do not have that anymore. And I say that because one of the things we have to do is we have to be better organized. I'm sorry that Mark Morial is gone, but I approached him three months before Melanie, and I said to him, "Mark Morial, you and Reverend Sharpton were in fact, had a couple of those meetings, you may recall, at the Hilton Hotel, where you brought together about 100 organizations." Walter Fauntleroy had something called the Black Leadership Roundtable, where hundreds of organizations came together. We cannot be effectively organized in this country if our leadership across the board, because Mark Morial said, "Well, what about the young folks?" I said, "Well, I'm an old head, but I have cultivated some relationships with some young people." Because they have to be at the table also. And so we need a formation. I think 100 organizations. And the important thing is, I don't have to be at the table. I have to see myself on the table. But what do I mean? I mean, I need to see my tendency, I need to see my political orientation at the table. Because everybody can't be at the table. because everybody can't be at the table. And one of the things I'm calling for is a national emergency summit of black folks. We should have had one before this election. If we're in trouble, we should have a national summit. But where do you want to have it, Ron? That's, I want it in Selma, Alabama, that's where I want it to be. And I want it to be in Selma, Alabama, because among other things, there are some people that have never been there. People say, Ron Daniels, how do you sustain yourself? I sustain myself in part because I have a communion with my ancestors, and when I go across that bridge, the blood of the bridge lets me know what my ancestors went through. And here's the other thing about Selma, think about this, for all that Selma has meant to black people, we go every year, Rose and Hank Sanders and their family, and we celebrate, and we're there, then we leave. Look at Selma, it is a dilapidated, dilapidated. It is terrible in terms of its economic development, people are underemployed, under, do you think some of those brothers and sisters give a hoot about voting? Selma ought to be a model city. It ought to be a model city for what, what it's gold and what it meant to the civil rights movement for all of us. And so I want, I want the summit to be in Selma, Alabama. Now, everybody can't, everybody may not be able to come, everybody may not be in the, but everybody can tune in. And bring some young people. That's how you overcome the Afrophobia, bring some young people to go across that bridge and let them know what happened on that bridge. And we can have, there are other spots around the country where we can do similar kinds of things along those lines. So an emergency summit in Selma. The other thing is, we act like we don't remember, you know, I mean, everybody want something new, we need to talk about some old stuff. We need to be able to use in this period, I mean, I don't, you know, like, this, I mean, it's not been a time when the Supreme Court, the presidency, and both branches of government by ultra-right-wing white nationalist forces, that ain't no easy playground. We can talk about resilience, we can talk about how dedicated we are, whatever, but we need more than dedication, we need a plan. And Martin Luther King talked about it. He said, we need to be able to redistribute the pain. George Frasier, aren't we sitting on damn near $2 trillion of economic power? Then we need to have, our economic power must be a weapon in the black freedom struggle. You know, I don't, you know, I mean, we ought to, like, keep Christ in Christmas, I'm not trying to talk about, you know, I mean, all that money we spent for Christmas? What would happen if we withdrew our dollars during the Xmas season? Because it ain't really, that's, it ain't, it's Xmas, that ain't what's going on now is a perverted, commercialized distortion of what Christmas is. If we took that power, and systematically, by the way, some of those oligarchs that are closing up to Trump now, when we withdraw our economic power, they will change their tune. Indiana, Indiana came out with a bill saying they were against trans people, y'all may not recall that. They came out with a piece of legislation, said, we, them trans people, all that, all that stuff came down, they were talking about it. The NCAA, which generates millions of dollars, said, we're not coming to Indiana. And they, you would have thought they were Michael Jackson, the way they moonwhack it back on that thing. They modified and amended in a minute. So what I'm saying is, we have to, we really do have to, and it's an ardent science, we can't boycott everything at the same time, but we have to, in fact, point at specific offending institutions and bring them to their needs. Send a signal that we're not playing, because I heard Comrade Mo last night say, we have to be bold. And I do believe we have to be bold. We have to deal with this issue of misogyny and sexism and all those kind of issues. We need to talk about it because we ought to be beyond that. It's about partnership, not patriarchy. But there's some people who still hold those feelings, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna have that conversation. I mean, next year is the 25th, is whatever anniversary of the Million Man March, right? Well, I don't want to have another Million Man March, I want to have a 2 million woman and man march. 2 million sisters and brothers working together arm in arm, because after the Million Man March, a sister out of Philadelphia called for a woman, and she organized another a million people. And I'm serious about that, I'm not playing, I'm saying we need to organize a march, but it cannot be a march just for a march stage, it means it's about political education and organizing. And when we leave, we ought to have some targets, we ought to announce to the world that we're coming for you. We're coming for you, because we need to be in a posture of being ungovernable, if necessary, because the time is up. We're talking about COINTELPRO on steroids. We're beyond this time where, well, you know, we're gonna have a demonstration, and we call the police department and say, we're coming at such and such an hour, and, you know, and we'll be getting out at such a time, and, you know, we have those, we have those orchestrated demonstrations. We need to fill up the jail, and you better be prepared that you may spend some serious time, if we are serious, using nonviolent resistance, and we need to use nonviolent resistance. But ain't gonna be no more of those fake demonstrations, they did, they had their purpose, we were looking for the photo ops and so forth, but ain't gonna be no more photo ops when they put Matt Gaetz as Attorney General of these United States of America. And by the way, we also need to deal with nuance and subtleties, politics is not simple. It matters who are in these positions. I often say in my own little humble way, because I don't know, I'm not a grand theoretician, the difference between the Democrats and Republicans is not fundamental, it is not a revolutionary change, it is incremental, but it is not inconsequential. Somebody came on my radio show the other day, and, I don't like the Democrats, man, they, 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 this Medicare Advantage, that's what they're for. I said, well, yeah, what the, I, I'm from, I'm from, I'm for Medicare for All, I'm for a single payer system. But because we have the current system, 50 million people who do not have health insurance now have health insurance, we cannot be mechanical about our analysis. To those 50 million people, they have health insurance. You take the 50 million and you build on it until we get a Medicare for All or whatever transformative system we want. Dr. Marlon Carringa said, we must be realistic, but as for reality, we have come to change it. That's, that's very, very profound in terms of saying, there's a system here, we're utilizing it, but we ain't, we ain't in love with it, we know we have to change it. Young people, artists, artists, there's some we've met here locally and so forth, all across the country, there are young artists who want to, to use their voice, and their voice is much clearer than mine, I don't know how to rap, I don't know how to rhyme, I'm from the, I'm from the, I'm from the civil rights generation, I'm from the rhythm and blues generation, I kind of understand the medium of it. But we need to call Chuck D off the, off the, off the battle, come out of retirement. We need a summit of rap activists. By rap activists, I mean those young sisters and brothers who didn't sell out, who didn't do the gangster rap, who didn't do the misogyny and all that, we need to have a summit, because their messaging is far more important, they know how to communicate in a way that perhaps we don't. George Frasier, I, we might have a different take on the family question, but what I do believe is that we have an extended family, we have different versions of family, and there should be no motherless children and no fatherless children in the black community. And we need to deal with the issues of violence and all that. I can recall the National Council of Negro Women going all across this country, I told you about it, y'all remember those black family unions they had? We need to do them again. So maybe it's a partnership and a collaboration between Frasier Nation and your concern about the black family and National Council of Negro Women pulling these family summits, these, another summit. Then we have to protect it, because we got young brothers and sisters, the nihilism in our community is so painful that we're afraid to gather, but we cannot be afraid to gather, we have to find a way to also protect those gatherings, but we need to get them on. There's something interesting about the therapeutic nature of movement, by the way. When we did the Million Man March, it was very interesting, because for a period of time, for four or five or six or seven days, on that day, the murder rate, the crime rate did what? It dropped, which suggested there's something therapeutic about movement. So we need to move in those directions. We need to talk about reparations, we need to push Biden to enact HR40 now in the lame duck section. But Ron, what the hell are you gonna do that for? He just pushes this, I mean, the orange man just gonna rescind it? But that's what I want him to do. I don't want him to do that, we know he will do that. But Biden needs to have Emancipation Proclamation moment, he needs to enact HR40 now in the lame duck session. We need to get that done, because the orange man will rescind it. But what will they tell, what will they say to all the people out there who we have worked for and reparations is now popular? It will set, let them know on whose side he's on, for some of those people who are having little trepidations about it, it'll be clear. So let's push Biden to get it in by executive order. And finally, we need to be in a situation where we're not only talking about financial literacy, we need to have financial literacy, we know how the system function and how it works. We need to cultivate a culture of civic engagement and political literacy. And by that, I mean not lecturing people, not just talking politics, I mean, the way you do this, you gotta make it fun, you gotta make it interesting, you can't just, and by the way, what is this whole thing is you only get interested in the electoral system best before the election, that does not make sense. We need to be constantly in motion, constantly organizing, and when we have this summit, we have to talk about these various methodologies of getting these things done. We need to talk about political literacy in our community. So sisters and brothers, I came prepared to, again, talk about some specifics coming out of this conversation, because like George Frasier said, if he's, what he's saying is true, then I got some years left, right? Because, you know, I mean, you know, and I come out of a faith tradition, I'm aching and hurting and can't know, but in a way, I ain't no way it's tired, because we come this far by faith, you understand? And I'm 82 years old now. I'm 82 years old.
Amen. Dr. Daniels.
And I want to share the torch, I want to share the torch and pass the torch. So we gonna, George, you, we gonna, we gonna hook up, we gonna hook up, we gonna hook up, we gonna hook up, and we gonna, we gonna move this thing forward, but I gotta close, because we got out of this church by a certain point, gotta get out of this church now.
It'll take less than 15 seconds.
I want, I want to close on this testimony, Mr. President. I want to give a prayer that was done by Imtameesi St. Julian, and I wish Mark Morial was here, because he knows him. And then we gonna rise, and we gonna sing the black national anthem again, and then we gonna do Harambe when we leave here. That's my plan, so don't interrupt my plan, brother, I mean, I got a plan, you know, you just speaking up on my plan, but President. May we always remember those who came before us, right? Don't have Afro, Afro, Afnezia. May we be inspired by their vision and their valor. May their lives continue to remind us that there's, that service, service leads servant leaders, service is more important than success, success is service. That principle, as you look at these people who are in there now, they have no principles, they are moral midgets, they are moral monstrosities, they have no character. We are the Myot people, going all the way back to ancient, what do we believe? In righteousness and justice. It's not about power, it's not about who has the greatest weapons. When we have been successful, it's because we are organizing and moving around the principles of righteousness and justice. And yes, it gets a little complicated sometime, because we not only do it for ourselves, we fight for all humankind, and every now and then, the folks we fight for, maybe they may forget, it's irrelevant whether they forget, we are doing it because it's the right thing to do in terms of who we are as black people. That's what blackness means at its essence, it's an ethic, it's an ethic, and we gotta drill that deeply into our people. May, may whatever we do be shaped and molded by honesty, competence and commitment. May our children and our children's children carry forth the pride and nobility of our history and our tradition to the creator of us all. Let us dedicate our lives to make this world better and to make this world more beautiful. Would you now please rise for the singing of the black national anthem one more time? Now, since I can't sing, since I can't sing, will somebody come, please, and lead, because I'll, I'll mess it up, who can lead, who can lead, lead it off? Who can lead, can somebody come up and lead it off? Who can, who can, who can, somebody come and lead it off for us? All right, Sister Malaya, thank you so much for being here. Yes, yes, yes.
Hi, I expect everybody to sing with me too now. It's on your program, right? Ready? Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmony of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the lifting skies. Let us march on till victory is won.
All right, number 127, Harambe, Harambe, please, let us all pull together seven times, and hold it as long as we can, and then we just all say amen, and watch how we do it, because we close the other church in 10 minutes, and we're saying amen. So on the count of three, one, two, three, we say what? Harambe, 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 Harambe.